Another one of my favorite things, I was talking to somebody, yes. Tyler, in the council chambers again. How does he keep doing that? How are you feeling, Tyler?
I'm actually a little bit under the weather right now, so.
All right, well.
But I'm surviving. I'm good.
Okay, good. All right. Healing thoughts for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Nat, is it going to be your Clementine or we're going to do our introduction today?
Yep, I'll do the introduction today and Kodiak Adams is our staffer for AMP and he's ready to go whenever, wherever you are.
Okay Kodiak, here we go. We're gonna do our usual.
Nat, real quick question.
Five, four, three, two, one, and good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our afternoon city council meeting of November 17th. And once again, we're doing the Zoom sharing with you. I think a lot of us are starting to get used to it. I had, I was going to give a talk to Land Watch the other day and sure enough, I had my mute button on and even though I said unmute, unmute, unmute. And what I forgot, but at least tonight I didn't. And so let's get started with our amazing assistant city manager who's going to talk about how we're running our meetings during the COVID crisis. So Nat, please.
Yep, happy to provide an overview of how folks can join. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov. Joining on Zoom is preferred because there is no lag time. You're connected live to the meeting in real time. This meeting is also being streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10 second delay. And also on Comcast Channel 25, which has a delay of about 90 seconds. If you plan to make a public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom on the app or by telephone. Making sure you join in time to accommodate any delays that might occur. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or the phone number that's on the agenda at isearchmonterey.org. And since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. Now Zoom's toll-free number has not been functioning for the last several days and Zoom engineers are working on the problem. So in the meantime, we ask that you join by telephone using the 669 area code phone number that's listed on the agenda. So you can join either by the link or if you have to call in, please call 669-254-5252 and then enter the meeting ID number, which is 1607729333 pound. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Please note that the 669 area code is based in Santa Clara County and long distance charges may apply. Detailed instructions using Zoom are available at https://monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment and you can raise your hand using the Zoom app, if you're connected by Zoom by phone, please dial star nine to virtually raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. And when called upon, you must dial star six to unmute yourself. We ask that public commenters, please turn off all television or computer speakers or go to another room when you're connected by phone because any background noise may cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. The mayor has designated a time limit for today's meeting and we'll be showing a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. We do ask that you please stay within your time limit and look forward to receiving public comments this evening.
Well, thank you, Nat, for that introduction. And I know that's a lot of information to take in. So any of people who want to join us, if you just go to monterey.org and take a look at the agenda of either the council, the planning commission, all of our other excellent commissions. And there's an explanatory introduction with all the links that you can use. So again, monterey.org and take a look at iSearch, look up the meeting that you want and take a look at the agenda. It'll have all those links for you. And so with that, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order and I would ask our Assistant City Clerk to introduce our balanced city council members, please.
Certainly, Councilmember Albert.
Here.
And Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
Mayor Roberson.
Yes, and I'm here as well. So as our Assistant City Manager Nat explained so well, how to participate, this is public comments and this is open mic. You can sing karaoke if you want. And this is public comments that are not on the agenda. This afternoon's agenda is consent. And when we're done with public comments, I'll share with you what items have been pulled. And so meanwhile, this would be any comments with a three minute limit, please, on anything within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey that's not on tonight's agenda. And we always look forward to this because we get many, many good ideas from our public, our citizens. And if you always want to leave a contact, I can assure you that our staff will get back to you. A lot of times, that's the best way to get a response. So we'll open up to a public comment. Anything not on the agenda, please? Are we looking at?
Yep, we don't have anyone with their hands raised, but if you are joining us via the Zoom app, please raise your hand using the raise hand feature that's on the bottom of your screen. And if you've called in, we do have a few callers, please dial star nine to raise your hand if you'd like to comment on an item that is not on today's agenda.
And we could go ahead and wait a moment because sometimes there's a little bit of a delay.
Okay. No one so far?
All right. Well, you know what? I'm more than if with the council's approval, if we get through the consent and someone says, oh, I've been, I meant, I meant to call in, I meant to call in and I couldn't get in earlier. We certainly can accommodate them. So why don't we go ahead to the consent agenda? Before we do that, we had one closed session item that will be continued to a meeting in December, if that is correct. So if you were, wanted to comment on the closed session item, please know that it is not on this evening's agenda. It will be continued to a meeting in December. So no closed session this afternoon. Then secondly, item number 11, which is the County Tourism Improvement District Report, MCTID, which is really quite a very interesting report, by the way. That's been pulled. And as far as I know, no other requests for anything being pulled. City Manager, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are proposing under for item number six. These is, item number six are the award for three professional services agreements for on-call architectural design services. Tonight, to just award under consent to a, the firms number one, ARG Architectural Resources Group and firm number two, TF Architecture and Interior Design. And not to award to number three yet, there's another question that popped up and that we need to address. So for tonight, we are just asking under if it's the pleasure of the council to award just to architectural firm one and two. And let us figure out the question that was raised regarding firm number three.
But Mayor, if I can just pull that item completely so we can discuss it, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Thank, I think Councilmember Dan, I really think that's a good idea. So yeah, so we'll pull item six and 11. Anything else? Councilmember Alan, please.
I don't know that I need to pull them, but I did want to make some comments on items 13 and 14 to acknowledge our staff.
Yes, yes, that's very good. We'll get right back to you, please. And Councilmember Tyler.
I'd also like to comment on 13 and 14 as well. And I would like to pull number four, since that project is within 500 feet of my house, I can't. I have to abstain from voting on that one.
All right. I don't think we have to pull it. We can simply, as part of the consent agenda, acknowledge that you abstained. Okay, that's okay.
There works.
See. Good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay. So let's go ahead and Alan, comments on 13 and 14. And thank you, by the way, for bringing that up.
Yeah, so for the public, item 13 is authorizing staff to move forward with purchasing adaptive traffic control equipment. And I, you know, this is something the public, I think, cares a lot about. Traffic is a concern. And so I just wanted to call this out. This is something that our city's been implementing and it helps move traffic along much more efficiently. So the other thing I wanted to note that I think it's really important that our staff went out and acquired grant money to pay for this. And so if I did the math right, it looks like we have something like two and a half million or something that we've acquired in grant money. And that we're spending about one and a half million at this time for improvements on Munross and Pacific Street and Foam and Franklin, I believe. So anyway, I just wanted to thank the staff and I think that I know all of the council is appreciative.
Good. Thank you for that. And Tyler, you wanted to comment on 13 as well, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to read, I mean, it's exactly what Alan is saying, but I just kind of want to read a section of the staff report for, for the public to have to read, just to kind of emphasize. So this enables the system to progress traffic through a corridor with fewer no stops. This results in less fuel consumed and fewer emissions and improves travel time, quality of life and safety. It is estimated that by the time the city has its corridors running on an adaptive system, that this will result in a yearly reduction of 20 tons of criteria pollutants. Travel times on Lighthouse Avenue before and after the adaptive system installation showed an average decrease in delays in average stops of 30%. I mean, this is remarkable stuff. It's great news. It's good for traffic. It's good for the environment. We're doing all the things that I think that our community members want. And I just give the city staff so much credit for the work they're doing to, to push us forward in these ways. It's on the consent agenda and this would have been done in quiet. Nobody would probably have really noticed. So I'm really glad that Alan also agreed to, to make some comments on this one. And the fact that the city staff has been aggressively seeking some grants for us, that it's just awesome, awesome opportunity there. I did have two questions. I just wanted to follow up on it with as well. So that delta, the difference between the amount that we have in the grant, I'm assuming that those will be available for other projects and opportunities as we move forward in the future.
Hans, can we turn it over?
We, we actually have the, the brain behind the grant accumulation here on, on the Zoom meeting as well. That's our city traffic engineer Andrea Rennie. And before Andrea will, will answer your question, I can only echo the, the good words that the council is spreading over the city traffic engineer and her team. I just spoke with her and I said, I don't know how you guys always find those grants, but keep doing what you're doing. And with that, I'm asking Andrea to please respond to Councilmember Williamson's question, what happens with the remaining funds?
Hey Andrea, before you begin your adjective for this evening, this brainy compliments of the city manager.
Thank you. I very much appreciate the comments. So the delta is going to use, it's going to be used for audible pedestrian signals. We did a complete inventory of our traffic signals and we have a lot of deficiencies that we need to fix. So the part that is not used for the adaptive is going to be for upgrading ADA signal systems and the rest of the controllers and basically what keeps the signals going. So I'm hoping that in the next two to three years, we'll have signals that'll last us about another 20 years.
Oh. Awesome. Thank you. And then my, my last question for you while I have you is I saw that part of the cost is for the maintenance of the adaptive system. And so how long are we expecting the maintenance cost to be covered under this current contract?
So there's a yearly maintenance cost and then there's a maintenance of equipment and replacement. So the yearly maintenance cost is similar to what you pay a yearly software system to continue to use it. So we have a yearly that is going to be covered by area district grants and the regional surface transportation program grants. After about five years, then they need to be covered by either other grant funding or general funds, but we usually try to find some other type of funding for the maintenance ones.
Awesome. Thanks. And thanks again for all your work on this, Andrea. You are awesome.
Thank you.
And brainy. And so item 14, Alan, you wanted to, and again, thank you for highlighting that for us, Alan. Councilmember Alan, item 14, please.
Yeah, so item 14 is extending the voluntary salary concession from our executive and our city manager and our city attorney through the end of the year, through the end of December. And so I want to thank them for their concern for the city and their willingness to put the city first. And you know, again, we continue to hopefully get through this pandemic so that we can return to normal and but I just wanted to express my appreciation.
Tyler, did you want to add on to that?
I'm just really echoing. I mean, I think it's very admirable. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues on the council had said anything to staff, but it seems like they did this voluntarily, recognizing the situation. So I think this is a great example of leadership and I just want to give all the MAMIA and confidential employee members out there just an applause for, for you making this, making this mark. I think it's a good example for the other bargaining units within the city and just a great example of, of, you know, what we do during times of struggle. So anyways, thank you.
Yes, and thank both of you. When we take a look, I know we're all hopeful with the, the two vaccines that are coming in at 90 and 95% effectiveness. And that's just the beginning. There's the distribution and the willingness of enough people to take it in order to have herd immunity and so on. So the vaccine is really going to help us to take care of COVID and to take care of the economic impacts that it's had on the city. But meanwhile, you bring forward that we've had a 30% cut in our general fund and going forward, we're going to have a very, very, very lean year next year. So we're looking forward to all of us working together on that. And that's a good example of what MAMIA has offered to us. We're grateful. We're kind of have to roll up our sleeves and we're certainly not out of the woods yet. So I think as I understand it, we're going to pull items six and 11. Otherwise, I did entertain a motion to approve the consent.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent with the exception of six and 11, and then I'll abstain from number four.
Yes, four. Thank you.
Yeah, and we do have a member of the public who has requested a full seven, just to clarify.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll amend the motion to a pull seven. Also, please, Tyler? And second, or Dan, yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Any comment? Roll call, please.
Did we take public comment on that, on that one?
On the items that are not being pulled?
On consent.
On consent. Yeah, so I thank you. So we do want to ask if there's any public comment on the consent agenda except for six, seven, and 11. Thank you, Clementine, for reminding me.
Yep. And a reminder to members of the public, please dial star nine to raise your hand or virtually raise your hand if you would like to comment on an item that is not being pulled. We've had the chyron up for the last couple of minutes, so no one else, aside from the one individual who's reached out to request items seven be pulled. There are no other requests for public comment.
Okay, then I think we're clear to do roll call, please.
Sounds good. Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Thank you. Item six is to award three professional services agreements not to exceed five hundred thousand for architectural design services. There were three potential awardees for that. Staff recommendation has been to award number one and number two and hold off on number three. Dan, would you like to introduce this or hear a staff report? How would you like to proceed, please? Councilmember Dan?
Well, it's the process, the RFP process, I think all of the councils already heard and how how it's how it's laid out. And so I don't really have any questions about the process itself. I just have some comments and questions about the two architectural firms that were chosen. So that's that's all I really wanted to discuss. Can I go ahead and start?
Yeah, please, Councilmember Dan. Yes, go ahead. That's excellent idea.
Okay, so I've been through processes of hiring architects in a previous job. And whenever I can or whenever we can, as a as a local school district, we try to hire architects that that are local. And we have quite a few pretty good architects that that could do the work for either the city or our school district. So I was quite surprised to see that there were two architect firms that were recommended that were in San Francisco and not in and not in the general area. I know there is one that's Fletcher, Daniel Fletcher Architects, but that's a small firm connected to a very large firm, which is out of Redding. So my big concern is that I like to support local businesses, especially local professional services. They know, local architects know the city really well. And and so I really would rather support local architects than architects that are they're not in this area. So it leads me to my question that I saw in the staff report that there were seven proposals. How many of those seven proposals were local architects? That's a question I have for staff.
Right, excellent. Could we ask our good staff, Hans, to answer that?
Our Public Works Director Steve Witry has shot cooked up this RFP, and he will probably share with us how many of the seven proposals were local.
Actually, that's one piece of data that I don't have with me, and I can get that to the council. I think that one of the things that we do in our in our matrix and scoring matrix, we do have a preference for local architects. As you well know, there's a matrix that goes and is prepared as we score each one of those architectural firms. And top points are given in that category to local architects. One thing I just wanted to note that one of the firms from San Francisco also was given high points in that regard. ARG has been an architect for us for many, many years. Their specialty is historic restorations. Work at Colton Hall, for example, requires a specific training and acumen, if you will, to make sure that we're making those appropriate recommendations and corrections to those properties. I don't have, like I said, to answer your question, I don't have the location of the other four that are on the list. I do know one was from Monterey for sure. For sure, the person who scored in the number four position, they were a Monterey firm. But I don't know where five, six and seven have their main offices.
Okay, thank you. So for me, when it comes time to support this, I can't support the two outside architects without at least having one Monterey architect in the mix, because I think it's very important, especially in these times, that that we support our local professional services and businesses. So at this time, I can't support the the item.
Okay.
That's it there.
Thank you. And so Hans, may I ask you, please, to explain the where the staff recommendation, which is to approve item one and two and not number three? I don't know if that would assuage Councilmember Dan's concerns or not, but I would ask our beneficent city manager to take that for me, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can I can echo what Mr. Witry was was just stating. We followed our purchasing policies with respect to professional services contract. And as Steve pointed out in the RFP, that there is a preference of points are given to local companies, but overall, these are seven or ten criteria that are being rated. And our staff consisted out of three different engineers that looked at the firms on the various points of view. And at the end, by applying just the standards that we have in our purchasing policy, we came up with a selected company. So that's the short end of that. It's I can share with you that in the past also we had local companies that came out on top of that. So it's a good mix, I think, that this is pursued. If council likes to change the purchasing or want to give local preference, we can do that through changes that have to be approved by council to our purchasing policy and our selection criteria. There are definitely options to consider that in the future.
All right. Other council input and all on this? Again, the staff recommendation is to approve firms one and two and hold off on number three. Alan, would you start us, please? Councilmember Alan?
Yeah, I mean, I think that looks like I'm frozen there. I think that it comes down to, as the city manager was saying, a policy and a procedure for awarding these contracts. For me, I think it would help if I actually were able to see the matrix and the scoring on these kinds of contracts. I agree with Dan. I believe there should be a local preference, but I don't know that it should be a sort of absolute, that if there's two, you just automatically, you know. So I mean, I think it would help for me to see the matrix and for us to maybe review our policy so that it could be we need to augment our local policy preference, our local hiring preference for professional services. And I'm interested in in pursuing that. As it comes to this particular thing, and I think it should be a point, I don't think it should be, you know, you hire them, you hire the local automatically. But I think there should be, for instance, it sounds like there is, but I'm a little unclear on how much the total points that is. I don't know where we are as far as time urgency on this. If it's not particularly time urgent, my preference would be to table it and maybe staff come back so we could look at our policy. Maybe we redo it. But if that's going to create some kind of you know, space problems with things that are coming up in the near future, then I would be okay approving the with the understanding that we may also be approving an additional firm in the future that may local. So I think I need here a little bit more from staff on the situation, where we're at right now, how urgent it is.
So City Manager Hans, can you reply to that, the timeliness and the potential to table and how urgent this is, please?
Yeah, it definitely is not urgent. However, we don't change purchasing policy overnight. That's a longer process, and that will require reshifting of priorities. So I I think what what I also like to share with you is that the one sector in the city of Monterey that is really well doing very well in this crisis right now that we are experiencing is the building industry. And we can say that because we are processing building permits across the office of mine and the building and permit office. Quite a few. There has been no breakdown in that. So I appreciate councilmembers and Dan's sentiments with respect to that. And I I think it makes sense to look into that purchasing. For right now, I feel the companies that were selected were also selected by a team that had experience with existing local companies as well. And in their rating, that is also reflective. And as every rating is, it's very subjective. But if you had experiences with any one of those proposers, and that is reflected also in the ratings that you see in front of you. So I think while there is no urgency, I like to have two contracts on on our side already, because, again, we are not building new schools or we are not putting out new buildings. By no means, we don't have the funding for that, but we might have to do a remodel of the historic structure on the Presidio or something in the city comes up, and we need a quick point and shoot by an architectural firm. And I really like to have qualified architectural firms right now on on our role, on our on-call role. So if it's council pleasure, we can look into local preference policy going forward. And that will not happen in the next couple of months, because, to be frank with you, our work program is full based on priorities that council gave to us. But and we are still having to figure out our fiscal survival here in the city. So with that, if that answers the question, Mayor, I think I'd like to go forward with two of them. Right now, we will figure out the third one and then look at the greater solution, which may incorporate a stronger local preference.
And Councilmember, thank you, Hans. Councilmember Tyler, please.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with the way the conversation is going. I think I brought this up when we were talking about some other work in the past. Like, if we want to change things, we need to have that those policies updated so that we move forward under that under those new value sets that we define. And I respect the fact that staff is a little bit overloaded right now. So I'm inclined to support this so that staff has what they need. It's only for a year. So my hope is that by next year, by the time this comes up again, hopefully, we've been able to bring this back in front of the council for us to determine if greater weight should be given to local preference.
All right. I think I would make, I think I could, I could support that. I'd like one more question for the city manager. So workload would be reasonable for revisit this in six months, nine months, a year? What do you think would be reasonable?
I cannot make staff allocation resources right now from this desk and give you a promise. You're looking at cannabis implementation that requires a lot of financial work on that. We are looking at trying to figure out how we survive the next two years budget-wise. So if I would give you six months, seven months, that would be dishonest for me right now, because I really do not oversee what priorities the council is giving us for right now. If you're okay with that, I will talk to our finance director as well and give you a response within the next week or so.
Okay, Councilmember Ed, please.
Yeah, and I too concur that whenever we can hire local, that is a high priority. What I don't know is the difference between three and four. As the Public Works Director indicated, that he did know that four was a local. Three is going to come back to us with additional information in a future council meeting. So I think if we approve the first two selected tonight with the caveat that when the third one comes back for our approval on an agenda, could we have a copy of the the process in terms of its local criteria? So that we could start getting ourselves up to speed with that. We may read that in comparison to the next selection and eliminate any necessity to change anything. It may be exactly what we want right now, and it may be exactly what we expect. So I think if the next one comes back to us with a copy of that, that would be helpful. Because I don't want to put staff through the process of just going through the exercise of trying to figure out something that we think is could be better until we start with identifying some weakness in the document that we have now. It may be exactly what it needs to be. And it could be that the fourth, fifth, sixth and seventh companies that were in the process didn't quite have the experience, the certification, and the professional selectors in this know far greater than I do about how to select that particular discipline. So I want to trust that process, willing to read and learn what the criteria is so that we have that ready. But I'm ready to vote for tonight for the two and vote for the third as it comes back up with the copy of the criteria that is attached to the staff staff work next time.
So my question is, when will that third be be presented to the council?
Probably within the next four weeks, Councilmember Albert.
Okay.
So Ed, I think what you said makes a lot of sense, and you're right. Maybe if we were to see what the kind of criteria were and how much was already weighed, maybe we would already be okay with this. So
Exactly.
So if you want to make a motion to that, to that along those lines, I think you'd probably get a second.
Yeah, I think if everybody's weighed in, we're ready. So I'll make the motion that we accept staff recommendation on the selection of the two firms listed ranked one and two in the selection process, Architectural Resources Group and T E F Architecture and Interior Design. And in a future date determined, bring back with the next agenda item for consideration of the third Nicholas or Nichols Melberg and Rosseto Fletcher Architects, a copy of the criteria that was used.
I'll second that.
Then we have a motion a second. My my comment is excellent discussion. I'm not on the committee that chose the various architectural firms. I don't work with those architectural firms every day that I would think our review committee does. And so, as was pointed out earlier, they have the expertise and they understand which firm's going to meet the needs of the city. We, as a council, I don't want to be sitting in here rating firms because that's a slippery slope, because we could be doing that on every RFP that we have, and that's really not our job. Our job is to set policy. And to emphasize, accentuate, to prefer local architects or local firms is a city policy. So that should have some weight, and I think it does. So that's what I think I'm willing, very willing to look at. But I don't want to get into the business to personally get into the business to start reviewing teams and RFPs, et cetera. Any final comments? Roll call, please.
Sorry to ask this again, but did we take public comment on that one?
Nope.
Of course we did. I did it so fast, you didn't hear it. You want to see it again? Public comment on that one, please?
No public comment on this item. We've had the chyron up for a few minutes now regarding item six.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
No.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, thank you. That passes four to one. Item seven, I believe, was pulled by a member of the public, as I understand. And if that's correct, what I think the first thing we should do is ask for a very brief staff presentation. This is something that has come back to us from our last meeting when we were taking a look at it rewarding the contract. And the council, the public had asked some questions, so the council asked that our staff to go ahead and go back and review that recommendation. So that's been brought back to us with a different purveyor or business at this point. And so with that, Hans, a brief report about how we got here, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Our Community Development Director, Kim Cole, has a brief report for you. And if you like, she also has ten slides for you. What do you like to have, Mr. Mayor? A brief presentation, verbal?
If it's only if it's only ten slides, we'll have to pass it. If it were twenty, I might go for it.
All right, let's do a brief presentation, please, Kim.
Thank you very much, City Council. This evening, you're considering awarding a professional service contract in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars to Matrix Design Group for the development of a compatible use plan for military installations in Monterey, in the city of Monterey and actually the entire Monterey County. And the second part of your action this evening is to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Just in terms of background, the city of Monterey, along with our partners, applied for and received and accepted a grant from the Office of Economic Adjustment. And the city council accepted that grant in September of two thousand nineteen. And the purpose of And the purpose of the grant was to prepare a compatible use plan, which is basically a study to look at compatibility issues and to identify sort of from the ground up in the community issues that need to be resolved. The city, in compliance with those grant requirements, circulated a request for proposal for about a month. We received several proposals, interviews were conducted. The first firm that was selected as the most qualified was Tetra Tech Incorporated. The city council considered that contract about two months ago, I believe it was, and decided not to pursue a contract with that firm. So the process of the RFP then is to go to the second ranked firm in terms of professional services. And that's with Matrix Design Group. And so city staff is recommending that the city council approve the staff recommendation, execute a contract with Matrix Design Group, and ask the city manager to sign that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have council questions at this point? Seeing none. Nat, do we have someone on the line who wants to share his or her thoughts, please?
We do, and we'll go with the first call in person. And if you could please state your name. We've clicked unmute. They will need to dial, let's see here, the digits are star six to unmute yourself. There we go.
This is Nina Beatty. I sent a letter to the council about this item. I did some research on their projects that they've been involved with. And the Gold Hills community is one project that they've been involved with, which has a number of environmental issues and problems that are still being vetted in the media. I'm, they've also done, worked on base reuse issues. I'm concerned because the pollution and health dangers for military facilities are well studied and they're very common. We've had examples here locally that continue to affect the public, like the Superfund site at Fort Ord. And the Naval Air Facility at the airport. The pollution is sometimes downplayed or not addressed, and it's an ongoing problem. It's been very, very expensive to deal with. And many people in the community have felt that it has not been adequately addressed. So in assessing interference, in assessing the impact of the military facilities on the public and on local communities, it's really important to have a very comprehensive look at it. And I'm concerned that any consultants that have ties to the military and have been doing these things, I'm concerned that the right questions need to be asked, and it has to be a rigorous process. I'm also concerned about what the DOD's goal is in this study. What are the actions that they are planning? What does compatibility mean? As there are issues that have been coming up in a number of communities. And I think of the Olympic Peninsula as one of those areas where the military has demanded essentially to have use of a quite pristine and world famous forest for electronic weapon testing. And to the great distress of naturalists and the neighboring communities. And despite a lot of public opposition, they've had no ability to really stop that and the damage that's being done in that forest. I'm very concerned that we may be deemed not compatible with the military mission. And our liberties, our communities infringed on, and our land use plans and policies nitpicked and micromanaged and controlled out of Washington, DC. I'm not happy with the Monterey model. It's not what we were told when it was adopted. It's become an extremely close relationship with the Pentagon. And for that reason, I can't support the CUP until I have more information about what it's going to involve.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up. And unfortunately, the beeper isn't working. But thank you for your comment, Nina. We appreciate you calling in as always. And let's see if we have any other callers who've called in on this item, item number seven. And looking at the list, we have nine. So back to you, Mayor Clyde.
All right, good. I think Nina really asked an excellent question, and that is, what is the purpose of the study? Why are we doing it? What does compatibility mean? And that's really the heart of the whole thing. So maybe we could ask our staff just to explain briefly. What are we trying to accomplish here?
It's actually the other way around, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
What we are trying to accomplish is that we are coordinating what the wishes of the communities are and calibrating that against the intent and wishes of the military installation. So it's a two-way process in which the analysis will basically align objectives of communities with the objectives of the defense sector here on the Monterey Peninsula. And to give you an example, that is an example that you do not have here on the peninsula. But it's one of those examples where a use analysis makes a great deal of sense. If you have a military airport located 20 miles from the next, from the next village, but urban sprawl and the villages are growing, and all of a sudden you end up with noise issues with neighbors that have encroached towards the installation. You look back and you say, it would be smarter if we would have had coordination discussions in order how to find out how we can mitigate those effects. And that's an example where compatibility analysis helps us to figure that out. The last aspect also that is very important is that this is financed by the Office of Economic Adjustment. And they are supporting communities. This is not a funding for military installations. But that the objective of the Office of Economic Adjustments has been always to support communities and preparing them also for the case of potential base closures. So having that analysis conducted in a timely way will provide us with also great insights, not only about the military missions right now, but it will also help us to get another preparation completed with respect to potential new rounds of base closures as well.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Tyler.
Yeah, so I actually just want to go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation. And before I look for a second, I just kind of want to explain why. I understand Ms. Beatty's concerns, but I think that if, to the city manager's point, if we can get this process going, it's going to be a perfect opportunity for Ms. Beatty and other community members to engage in a dialogue around issues that community members may have with the military installations and really provide an opportunity for us to have that dialogue and move this conversation forward and potentially create some good opportunities for everybody. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Well, second. All right, motion second. Further discussion? Councilmember Ed, please.
Yes, I wanted to respond to, you know, some of the consideration of this tonight. And previously, when we were looking at this, and the word that stands out to me after hearing the explanation from the city manager is stakeholders. So I just want to point out that the stakeholders are really what this whole thing is about. It is to determine what the impacts of the military installations are in our community and how we look for opportunities to make things better. So this is a grant. It's not city money. We're participating in this process because we provide these kinds of services through the IXUS contract through the Department of Defense. So we kind of are in a position where we can help navigate and select the appropriate company to do this work. And I think the city manager provided a real standout overview of why and the purpose of this. In the staff report, one of the comments I want to just point out is the military is one of the city's key economic sectors. And it is important for the city to understand the local and regional issues. And the RFP did include communication services as a key issue. So with that, I would support the motion. I think it's worthwhile and it's valuable material. And the stakeholders will have an opportunity to participate.
If I may add one more piece of information, this is actually managed by a local environmental company, Dennis Duffy and Associates.
Yeah, thank you. Good catch.
Yeah, glad you put that in there. Any more comment? All right, then we'll do roll call, please. And we did do public comment.
We did, and we received it. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, for me as well. And I want to assure the public, including Ms. Beatty, that we did receive the letter. It has been put into the public record. And to remind people too, whenever you email a member of the council or the city, that on the official city email site, that becomes a public record. And so we wanted to know that for a couple of reasons. One, to know that it is part of the public record. And secondly, you can't really say this is a confidential email to a certain council member, et cetera. It isn't. So that's just all part of the transparency. So item 11 was the last thing on the consent. And I don't know if one of our council members pulled that or a member of the public. Hans, could you help me with that, please?
Yeah, I think we sold it, Mr. Mayor, because we were told about an oversight yesterday. And the finance director will quickly explain what that is, and then we hope we can move to the vote.
Okay, good.
Great. So in the staff report, we referenced three zones. There are actually just two zones as notated in the attachments, two and three. So that's really the only change. So in the staff report, it references three zones. There shouldn't be only be zone one and then zone two, which is an additional 50% for the city of Salinas for their visitor's center. So aside from that, everything else in the staff report and attachments remain unchanged.
All right. Any public comment on that? I beat you to it.
No public comment on this item.
Okay, so council comment, or you're ready for?
Move to approve item 11.
Yes, second. Okay, so I think Alan made the motion to approve. That's interesting. I've got an icon on my screen I've never seen before. But anyway, so Alan made the motion, Councilmember Dan, second in the discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, for me as well. So I think we've made it through the consent. And we don't have a closed session, so I believe we can recess and see everybody this afternoon, this evening, excuse me, at seven o'clock. And I encourage everyone to do takeout at their local restaurants so we can keep everybody in business.
Use the mayor's credit card.
Very good. Heading over to Councilmember Alan's for pizza. Take your choice. All right, we'll see you all a little bit later.
One, welcome back everyone to our evening session of our city council meeting. And in a moment, I think I'm going to, I think I'll have our assistant city manager do that now. We probably should review the rules for participating in our meeting. If you would do that, please Nat, then we'll do the pledge right after that, please.
Okay, happy to share that there are two ways to participate in city council meetings. One is to join directly on zoom gov using the zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second method is to join in by calling into the meeting. We recommend that you join using the zoom app because there is no lag time. When you're joining on zoom, whether it's on your computer or smartphone, use the link or phone number that's listed on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. Zoom's toll free number has not been functioning for the last week. So you'll need to call into the area code 669 number that's listed on the meeting agenda. And that phone number is 669-254-5252. And the meeting ID is 1607729333 pound. And once you get in, you'll be prompted to enter a participant ID. All you'll need to do is type or press pound. And just please note that the 669 area code is in Santa Clara County and long distance charges may apply. Detailed instructions on how to use zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, all you need to do is raise your hand using the zoom app. Or if you're connected on the phone, please dial star nine to virtually raise your hand. And then dial star six to unmute yourself. When you do call in, please turn off your television or computer speakers because there can be static noise and background noise that causes interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each speaker in the order of their hands raised. And the mayor has designated a three minute time limit for today's meeting. And we'll show a countdown timer on the screen as well. So we do ask that you stay within your time limit. The meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey. There's a 10 second delay on that platform. And it's also being streamed on Comcast channel 25 with a 90 second delay. We look forward to hearing public comment tonight.
Thank you for that reminder. And again, we want to welcome everyone who's been able to navigate our zoom meeting. You can watch it on YouTube and also AM, our good partners who do so much outreach for us. So with that, I'm going to ask Nat if he will put up our now traditional flag over Colton Hall. Where the constitution convention for California was written, although Monterey was not the first state capital, unfortunately.
Yep, my computer seems to be having some issues. I have a blue screen on my, on here, so I am going to try to see if, if you can see it. But if not, I might be having a computer issue here that doesn't allow me to show the flag. I don't know Clementine can pull it up?
See it, see a big blue.
Yes, big blue. Okay. Well, that's not helpful. Clementine, are you able to pull up the, the video? Because my computer isn't.
There we go.
There we go.
We're ready.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Okay, so if everyone would please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, indivisible. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Glad that worked.
Good, and we, we will thank you, that worked. And good ingenuity and flexibility, everyone. Continued public comments, this would be an opportunity for anyone to share some thoughts that within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey that's not on the agenda. If you wanted to talk about the report, we're going to hear from measure P and measure S, please wait. Also, the conference center and our franchise fee with Monterey disposal. If you want to talk about those, just wait right now, anything not on the agenda. So we'll open it up. And again, I think Nat has been sharing the chyron. And hopefully you're able to share with us this evening. So we'll just wait a moment till let people queue in and join us. Did we lose an ad by any chance?
Um, I can jump in here. I'm not sure if we did. I see Nat there. If anyone present on the meeting would like to give public comment, please use the raise hand feature in the zoom app to let us know that you'd like to speak.
And you find that just by clicking on to participants?
It's right near the bottom of the screen.
Right, so if you hit participants on your screen, it'll pop up and it'll say invite, mute me and raise hand.
And Mayor Clyde, we don't have anybody raising their hand, so I think we do not have general public comments.
Okay, great. Thanks for telling us that. We did not have a closed session, so there's no announcements, obviously. And then we're going to go right into presentations. We're very pleased to have, is it just two members? Carol Tchabajian and Rick Aldega from our measure P and S committee, I think are our two august guests today. And we'll go ahead and go right into that. I think if everyone knows a measure P was passed. You're gonna have to help me with the date, we just passed measure S. But with an 83% approval rating, which absolutely set a record throughout the state. And that's a one cent tax that goes directly to our streets, sidewalks, handicap access and storm drains. And we're going to have a report number one on how many projects have been done, the total projects, the amount of money that's been spent on that. And secondly, our excellent oversight committee, which keeps the, an eye on things and make sure that the money that you voters have approved for those purposes, go to those purposes. And I think the city is doing a really excellent job. But part of the ballot measures for both PNS was to have an oversight committee. And I think Carol and Rick are our original members and are still hanging in there with us, I believe. So thank you so much. Hans, our city manager, any, any, probably want to introduce, are you going to introduce our amazing finance director, or are we going to go to our committee?
I will go to our public works director, Steve Wittery.
Steve, okay, Steve.
Thanks Hans, you know, no, no advert for me, I guess, just average public works director I'll go with today.
I thought we gave you one. Here it is, authentic.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Appreciate that. I was going to start the reports on a light note. So thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is a report that we're doing. It's an annual report that we give to council to let us know that you guys know the status and the community's status of the oversight committee and measure P revenues and to measure S revenue as well. I can take a little bit of advantage, like you had mentioned, and just run through a real quick PowerPoint, identifying some of the work that we've done and some of the statistics. And then I'll certainly offer Carol and Rick an opportunity to weigh in on how they think the oversight committee, how we've been doing over the last five years or so. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen now. We'll see how this works. There you go. And it's working. Look at that. Okay. So as I mentioned, this is the update. So measure P, as you mentioned, one cent sales tax for a period of four years to fix streets. It was passed in 2014 with an amazing majority. People wanted their streets fixed. Included with the passage of the streets was work for the ADA access, work for storm drains and work for sidewalks to just improve some of the dilapidated infrastructure that we had. Four years later, measure X came into play. It was extended for eight additional years and intended to cover the remaining streets. Measure P had a specific list of streets that were approved. Measure S essentially was done to finish the job. And as you mentioned, the community apparently liked the way that we were working. And they pushed us forward to allow us to finish the job. Since we began our work on this process in 2016, the pavement condition index for the city, which I'll get into in a little bit, was 53. And now we're at about a 69, which is, which is actually pretty good by comparison to communities of our size. We'll get into the PCI in a little bit here. Just some quick financials, this is Lauren's specialty. And this is what we'll talk about a little bit later. But these are the revenues and expenditures that we've had over the course of the measure P, measure S series. As you can see, jumping to the right side of the screen, we brought in roughly almost $50 million of revenue. And to date, we've expended about $44 million of revenue on the city's infrastructure. Just to give you a picture of where we're at and how many streets and arterials. When we do our street work, we define the streets by how much traffic and how they're classified. So arterial, you think of this like your human body and your blood system. You have arterials and you have capillaries and that's the blood flows through your body. Traffic is a lot like the, the blood of the community. Their arterials carry the more load and out to the collectors and the residential streets, which carry people from their houses to those arterials. In general, we have a little over 100 miles of center lane miles. It's about 16 million square feet of pavement that we have out there to maintain. The 1191 number references how many blocks we have from intersection to intersection. That's how many blocks are in the city of Monterey, about 1191. So measure P and S items have not been a stranger to the city council's agenda. Over the past five years, we've been to the city council no less than 75 times on various approvals of projects or updates such as this to keep the community informed. It's a pretty astounding number of times we're here on average about once a month or approving projects on a regular basis to, to meet the community's needs. Over the time period from inception, we've done 40 formal public works contracts, formal bidding processes. And we've done 46 other projects, which we've done through job orders or through a little bit less or an informal process, as we call it. Recently, we changed our value limits, but essentially a formal contract for all intents and purposes for measure P is any contract with a value greater than $100,000. So far to date, we've completed about 11 million of the 16 million square footage of maintenance and repair. We didn't work on them, consisting of a little bit short of 800 street segments in that time. This is a little fun graph that we put together. It comes together from our pavement management software. What this does is allows you to compare how we've done over time and look at where we're at in PCI. And like I said, pavement condition index, it goes from zero to 100. If you look to the top, the chart there, the historical pavement condition trend. PCI is not like a letter grade for your, your school. You know, it's not 90 and above is an A and 80 and above is a B and so forth. It actually is a scale from zero to 100. And it identifies where your pavement ranks in its condition and what kind of treatment is going to be appropriate or you can estimate to perform to bring that street to a state of good repair. So when the areas, when the streets are in the above essentially 50, we can do a patch and slurry. When they're below that trend, it's an overlay or a full reconstruction. As you look through the center of the graph, it's a lot of stuff on here. And I apologize, but it tells a lot of information on this. In the center of it, by the classifications that we had mentioned before, had mentioned before, it gives a PCI for each of those individual classifications. And it lets us track how we're doing citywide. The entire road network is like a living being. We had to treat it as such and move our way through it so that we can make sure we're using the value of the dollars efficiently and effectively. And the last thing I just wanted to comment on really quickly was the historical network condition trends, which is the bottom right corner and those charts there. As you look to the beginning of the, the, the project, the measure P approval in 2015, that was kind of how our streets were identified in terms of percentages of, of certain streets and where their capacity was. What level were in good shape, what level were in okay, what were in poor and were very poor. What you can see is the level of good streets have, have gone up while the level of poor streets have gone down, which is always a good trend to have. Like I said, there's a lot of information on this and certainly can come back if there's desire. But the grand scheme of this process is that we're doing pretty well and our, and our goals, and we're meeting our goals and we're hitting a lot of the city. To put it graphically, in the council report, you'll see a list of about 15 pages of streets that we've actually done work on over the course of measure P and S. We've worked with Ursula to create a, a street that we've touched, if you will, within the city of Monterey. You can see we've done quite a bit of work to date. There's still some areas to go, obviously. But we've done quite a bit of work to date and we're working to, you know, as we said, finish the job. Recent construction during the last, during this calendar year, essentially, with COVID, didn't stop us from doing our work. And we've continued to, to work through the, through and get projects done. As I mentioned, measure P also does some storm drain work. In the initial measure P, one of the first things we were tasked to do was to perform some silt removal from these two drainage ponds, which feed into Lake Elastero. We knew the permitting was difficult. We began the permitting, actually was one of the first things we actually did was begin the permitting to get this, this project done. Eventually, the permits have gone through. We were able to complete a lot of this work just this past October and into early November for Lagunita Marada and Washer Women's Ponds. During the last month, a few months, we've been able to do some curb ramps on Fremont Street in preparation for other work. Like I said, more examples of work that we've done in the very recent past. Some work that we've done in Villa Pariso and Montevista. Villa Pariso was, is what you can visualize as a patch and repair, where bad sections of the road are taken out and then they're patched and then an overall slurry coat is placed. And other areas on the right side, Montevista, is the actual placement of a slurry, which is a maintenance coat, which provides a wearing track for vehicles into the future. Alvarado Street, you know, we always look for silver linings. Alvarado Street in downtown hit dramatically by COVID. The traffic was not there. We took the advantage of trying to get into the community and to do that work in very quick fashion. And we were able to do a lot of work on Alvarado Street in particular. It looks fantastic. I wish it was under better circumstances for the community. But like I said, we had to try to make lemonades out of, out of lemon, make lemonade out of lemons when we can. And this is one of the places we were able to do that. This is the paving action happening on Alvarado Street, as well as some curb ramps that we see out there. Looking forward into the, into the next construction season, the areas in red here are identified where work is intended to occur. the areas in red here are identified where work is intended to occur. One of the things that you'll notice is that by way of sheer volume, it's gone down a little bit. That's because the work is intensifying. So the work itself is more costly, more difficult as we go to more of those heavy-duty repairs. So as we get a little closer to looking at where in the Marvis and Old Town Downtown area. You know, these are more than just simple repairs for most of these streets and require a little bit of extra effort out there. As council may have noted, in the last council meeting, we approved a contract with, it was, you know, for a little over $1 million, and it only had three street segments, and that was kind of surprising to council, I think. But that's because the level of work is intensifying. If you recall back to the inception of Measure P, we wanted to make sure we'd made the dollars go as far as they could by doing the maintenance at a lighter level before it got into the heavy-duty repairs. Now we're into the heavy-duty repairs, and people are going to notice more substantial repairs happening. So this is what we have going on or plan on going on into 2021 year, as well as work at Ryan Ranch and Casa Verde Ramona, which was one of the roads that you had just approved, I think, a council meeting or two ago. And that's kind of the update for where we were and where we are in terms of the projects that we're going. Like I say, I want to take a little bit of opportunity to let the public know and council know how the dollars and where the dollars have been spent. We have a lot of work to do still. There's still places to go. We get comments regularly about when is my street going to happen and so forth, and we're working on schedules to get that work done and meet the community's needs as soon as possible. So if there's no questions or if there's any questions we have to answer, otherwise I'll turn it over to Carol and Rick to talk a little bit about their findings from the Oversight Committee.
Steve, before you turn that over to Rick and Carol. When Measure S was passed, it was an eight-year projection. That would be about how long it was going to take to get the job done?
Correct.
Now, with COVID and the economic devastation that's hit the entire country, including the city of Monterey, we're obviously receiving lower sales tax, which means we are receiving lower amounts of Measure S money.
Correct.
How does that impact our eight-year window? At the end of our eight years, are we going to be at the point where all of the anticipated projects were not finished because we did not get the income because of COVID-19 economic impacts?
Well, I think a lot of that's really going to depend on how quickly the economy rebounds from COVID. You know, as you mentioned, we anticipate, you know, on the screen, we have, it's identifying that we had, you know, 9 million is estimated for 1920. We're anticipating probably in the seven or eight million going forward beyond that to the next fiscal, as we're forecasting for. It's hard to tell how long that will last. The one benefit from COVID has been that we've had a lot of interest from contractors. We're getting a lot of bids coming in. The price of oil, which relates directly to the price of asphalt, is at lows, historic lows. So the prices we're getting are really good right now. So is it lower than we anticipated, when you take in the inflation that we had forecast? It's really hard to determine that at this point in time. I think the best thing we can do is keep looking at our estimates for revenue and keep providing those projects going forward that are within our revenue estimates, and we can look at where we have and forecast in the next three or four months and in the next, you know, year or two, to see how we're going to get it done. Right now, I'm optimistic that we will still get it done, even in spite of lower revenues. But like I say, right now, I think our revenue is anticipated to go down by about 2, 2.5 million. If it continues in that downward trend, it's going to be difficult, though.
Yes. Excellent answer. Thanks so much. So at this point, Steve, so we turn it over to Carol and Rick to share their thoughts as our subcommittee Oversight Committee. We'll do that. And Carol and Rick, again, thank you for being here and for being 2014 six-year members of our.
Our pleasure. And I, Steve, I have a quick question, because we're doing so well that with this, if there were slurry seal on the initial streets and when P first started, will that, some of those are going to have to be redone before the end of S? Is that correct?
That is correct. Basically, what we're getting ourselves on track for is to not fall in this hole again. So basically, what's going to happen, and it's going to be kind of odd to the community, and thank you for bringing it up, Carol, because some people may see streets happening twice before their street happens once. And that's because we want to get onto a maintenance program where every five to six years, we hit a slurry seal to protect that investment of the road pavement and base beneath that. So we're seeing actually that happening right now and assessing, you know, it's a few questions, but by doing a maintenance dollar, it's pennies on the dollar by comparison to a reconstruction. So it's all part of managing the funds and getting to a place where our pavement system is manageable beyond the Measure P S timeframe. The goal is that when we're through with this process, the existing gas tax dollars or other funds that come from the state are going to be sufficient to have a maintenance program that will keep us at a fairly high rate of success for our streets.
Yeah, I think it's important for the residents to keep in mind that the rehab rather than rebuild, so that when we can do that, we're in a much better, as you say, it's a much less expensive case scenario. And so that if somebody's like, you know, my street gets slurry sealed again, that it's like, because you're keeping the PCI up to a point where you don't have to do that. Because once you get, is it once you get to 40% or more that you have to do, you have to do all the ADA compliance as well? Is that correct?
Yeah, what we do is we have to do digouts or do corrections of more than 40% of the street. We kick in the ADA requirements that are required for curb ramps and so forth. Below 40%, we can call that just regular maintenance.
We thought it was brilliant in our last meeting that when I, we thought that how much work was being done in the spring, and that it's like, what incredible foresight Steve had to have all that work being done when there was very little traffic. I thought it was brilliant. And it just, it did work. It dovetailed, you know, the good news and bad news, or bad news and good news, that it dovetailed very nicely, and a lot of work got done in the spring. So we want to thank you, and I think we're pleased as to the way things are going.
Thank you.
I think a couple of observations that I've had being on the committee. First of all, I've been waiting all evening to say this, that unfortunately, I think the, you know, the pandemic has been a bit of a bump in the road. And I hope it's something that we all recover from quickly and are able to, you know, get back to, get back to business and move ahead. But.
Find your phone and money.
I'm really happy with the committee, the work the committee has done, the Oversight Committee. I think the folks have taken that job and that role very seriously and have done a really good job of asking questions. You know, I could say holding Steve's feet to the fire. Maybe he's felt that way at times, but again, just really paying attention and asking good questions, smart questions, and making sure that we're all working for our mutual benefit. And, you know, Steve and the city staff have all been really great to work with as well on the committee. They have been incredibly responsive. We've asked for changes in formats of reports and words used so that it was easier for us to understand and be able to ask the right questions. And so they've been incredibly responsive. I think the committee and city staff has worked really well together on this project. And, you know, the best part about it to me, I was really happy that Measure S passed. It would have been a shame if we had gotten such a good start on this project and were unable to finish it. I think, again, I got to give kudos to the voters in Monterey for making the right decision. And the best part of it all, though, is that, you know, we're at a point now where we're really seeing the results of all of those efforts, and I'm really happy about that.
I just, Steve, I want to know, I want those Mexican stones on my street.
See what we can do.
Mr. Mayor, last one at least. We talked a lot about streets tonight, but there was also, early on, with Measure P, very important work done in the storm drain systems that brought all our storm drain pipes up again to absolutely functionality, as well as a lot of sidewalk work was accomplished, as well as ADA compliance. So while, of course, the street's PCI is the centerpiece of that, storm drain sidewalks and ADA accessibility with on the sidewalks and the ADA curbs and ramps and pedestrian push buttons in the right height. All that helped really completely to improve our streetscape.
I think one more thing too, Hans, with the really done well is the way that the city staff has been able to combine monies with other, from other areas, so that there were, and there were some of it that said, you know, why aren't we having, getting this done first? Well, you know, Canary Row had some money, or one of the neighborhoods have done an incredible job of combining monies to really maximize the spend. So I think that's been brilliant as well, so.
Yeah. Great point, Carol. Thank you. Great point.
Yeah, we were lucky to have Measure X approved from TMC, Councilmember Smith is nodding, and of course SB1 also very much criticized when it was implemented. But all those factors came all luckily together and helped us tremendously to catch up in a very, very fast time.
Good. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to our committee for the work that you've done. We really appreciate it. It's important to have our community engaged in this process, and you certainly are leading that. As far as like Measure P and the, you know, the storm drains were important, streets were important, sidewalks were also. Council at that time was concerned. We'd had a lot of trip and fall lawsuits. And in our recent city attorney update, I noticed we hadn't been sued for a trip and fall accident. I want to say it's been about three years now, whereas literally every year from 2012 to I think 2017, there had been at least one, if not two or three, trip and fall lawsuits. So we were hoping that improving our sidewalks would help with that. And I think it probably is helping. I think we also want a pretty noteworthy lawsuit relating to that. That may also be playing a factor. But anyway, I'm really glad to see the progress we're making on our sidewalks as well.
Good, thank you. Any other council comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll just make one comment if I could, Miss.
Yes, please. Councilmember Ed.
I had about three weeks ago, a visitor from up north who came to the office, and we spent some time and we walked to dinner, and the next day, he went out and walked around downtown and on the rec trail and a variety of places. And then he was here for a third day, and he rode his bicycle all over the place. Compliments to him. He, as a visitor, recognized the quality, not only the scenic beauty, but the quality of the intersections, the signal lights, the sidewalks. He was wowed. He was jealous. So I just wanted to give that feedback from my friend Roger that came. I wanted to also highlight the other members that are on our Oversight Committee. Carol, could you give them a shout out for us, remind us about the entire Oversight group?
Rick, why don't you do that? We have, I'm going brain dead. Rick Hoyer. How about Lauren? Why don't you do the list?
Sorry to put you on the spot, but I know there's others. I want to give them kudos.
Rick Hoyer, Nick Seanis.
There you go. Well done, Carol.
Thank you. I'm old. What can I say?
So thank, yeah, thanks to all those that are on the committee for the time that this takes. And thanks for the voters for being patient and allowing all of this to come together with a really a master plan of, P was the start, S was the finish bridge, and then companion, as has already been spoken, with Measure X and then SB1. And so the Measure X piece has the bigger projects that will be money coming to the city each year based on the sales tax. And I know that's a dream come true and long range. I know Munrus needs some help and other locations with some particular intersections that are very expensive. So we look forward to continuing to see how this strategy plays out and improves our our pavement number and our pedestrian accidents go down, our collisions go down in key intersections. But thank you for staff for all your work, and thank you for the committee that is the Oversight.
Good. And I'm going to add a thank you to Councilmember Ed Smith. There are many, many people who worked on getting Measure S passed, and Ed Smith, more or less, was the unofficial chair and brochure preparer and fundraiser. And I certainly appreciate Councilmember Ed's leadership on getting that Measure S renewed, along with everyone else who participated.
Yeah, thank you very much. The 84% that voted for it, unbelievable mandate. If you're looking for a mandate, that was it. So we heard loud and clear what our community wanted and expected. So pleased that we're able to deliver that.
And Ed, I think just one other thing, too, that we just need to keep in mind, at the end of the eight years, when I feel confident that Steve will get everything done, we do have to keep in mind the fact that whether it's X, whatever the money is, that we can't just stop. We need to keep it maintained so that we don't end up in this situation again in 20 years.
Yeah, very, very important.
Again, that observation is so true. If you look at our national infrastructure, we just simply haven't maintained it, and maintaining is a lot cheaper than having to rebuild it.
Yeah, and cobblestones on Carol Street would last about 100 years. So, you know, maybe we will work on some cobblestones and, right?
Okay, we'll start with Pacific Street, Ed.
No, I don't want the rough ride. Thanks. I'm fine.
Anyone else? Councilmembers? Staff? Councilmember Tiling?
Yeah, I do want to give some kudos to the committee, all the great work. And I particularly appreciate Carol's last comment there, because this is something that I definitely think about when looking into the future of the city and making sure that we're not kicking the can down the road as far as future problems. And so hopefully, through these conversations, there could be a discussion around how are we making sure that we're setting enough funding aside to support that continued maintenance so that we're not having to have these bigger problems down the road. Comment there, Carol. I do just have two questions, and I'm going to throw them out at the same time, just so I can spare you all from hearing me blabber. The first is, I'm wondering, there's been an uptick in the amount of spending expenditures from Measure S to Measure P this year. And I think, Steve, you spoke about it a little bit earlier. It seems like there is a little bit more opportunity to do some projects, perhaps because there's been less use on the roads than there has been in the past. And so I'm just, and the projects are more expensive, and I'm sure that has to, plays a role in it as well. So I'm wondering if you could just speak more to why we've seen a great increase in expenditures this year versus other years. But I would put a side note in there that it does seem like it's a great thing for our community because we are creating employment, right, and creating opportunities for people to be working at a time of economic distress. So that's my first question. And then the second one is, you were showing some of the maps in your presentation earlier, and I know that there's been maps in the past that kind of showed which ones were complete, which ones were not. And I'm not sure if there's somewhere you can direct folks in the public to go on the website where they can get access to the latest status of what's been completed and what's not.
Sure. So the second question first. Basically, we have a website that links to the activities from Measure P. We'll make sure that the latest information is updated there. We also have a construction hotline identifying where construction is going to be occurring. That's updated on a regular basis, weekly, I believe. That gets updated to make sure that people are understanding where the construction happens. But we'll make sure the latest graphics are on.
But we'll make sure the latest graphics are on the Measure P website that we have linked from the city of Monterey.org site. So that's that's simply where folks can find that that linkage. The second one is kind of a combination of of aspects is why we're spending more. One is, you know, thank you to council because some of the issues that we've been having, we're trying to attract and find staff to deliver these projects. So now actually I have a fairly and it's it's great in times, but right now, you know, with with certain economic futures, you know, I have staff in right now that that's able to power through and put a lot of plans and specifications on on the table and push forward with those those processes. Yes, we are getting into some a little bit larger cost per project. But one of the things that we're doing in relation to our budget is is we're packaging differently. So we're we're making sure that we're making the most of available dollars. I think we're actually getting better as we're going through this process. As as you look through our history and how we're delivering them, we're being more creative and more innovative, how we're putting the packages together. And to be frank with you, some of the designs are we've done it once and we can copy it elsewhere. So we're getting more efficient in producing plans and documents for bidding. So it's a combination of staffing. It's a combination of the projects are a little bit more expensive, but not to the extent of the, I think one graphic showed like 8 million to 13 million this last fiscal year. It's not so much the expense of of the individual process. It's our efficiencies have improved and the staffing from from ability to push work out has improved as well.
Thank you. Wonderful responses. Thank you for all the work that you you and your staff are doing, Steve.
I'll pass it on. It's it's, you know, I I'm the guy who gets to sit up here and talk to y'all. But there's there's a lot of folks behind the scenes that make this actually happen.
Amen. Isn't that true of almost everything? Councilmember Dan.
Yeah, thank you. Everything's already been said, but I do want to mention that thanks to City of Monterey residents, because not only did they pass S and P, but it's obvious that they care about their community. They also passed school bonds too, over the last five or six years and and to improve not only MPC, but all the Monterey schools. So we have to thank the voters for really taking care of their community. And I and I really, I'm really proud to be a a member of this community when you see that kind of commitment. Also, the Oversight Committee, everybody's thank you. Thank you very much for all your hard work. I know it's probably meet on a quarterly basis and it takes a lot of time to put those that paperwork together and everything, and I appreciate that. And staff, I know how difficult it is to spend heavy amount of money in a small amount of time. And you guys do a great job. Just shows how organized you are in your organization. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, excellent. And we also want to, even though the authentic Public Works Director was the star of tonight's show, we also want to talk about our brilliant Finance Director because I know you work hand in hand. And I've been to some of the subcommittee meetings and Finance and Public Works are just great partners, along with everybody else that makes it happen. So again, with that, with much appreciation, we're going to move on, so.
We may want to open up public comment just briefly.
Oh, thank you. I meant to do that if there is any public comment.
Yeah. And the current has been up and just for those who are joining us, feel free to raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this item. But it appears that there are no public comment, public commentators, I can't say that word today, so we should be good. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, the next item is again everything we're doing now at City Hall obviously is COVID-19 related from a health viewpoint as well as an economic viewpoint. As everyone knows, the City of Monterey has been impacted heavily, along with other municipalities. City of Monterey, in some ways more so, because we have facilities that normal, a city of 28,000 normally does not, such as the Conference Center, and that's going to be the topic of our next discussion. World-class, beautiful conference center, which in essence has been closed since March, since our initial sheltered in place. And there are bonds due and those bonds were being paid by a an assessment and add-on to the hotel motel tax. Obviously, with the hotel motel tax and occupancy at our hotels declining, diminishing, what we have is a potential shortfall in paying off bonds. And with that, our very bright staff, a city manager and brilliant Finance Director, along with everyone else in the city, put their heads together and approached the bondholders and did some incredible work to get us to the point where we're going to be able to meet our obligations at this time. And so that's no small thing. So we appreciate it and we'll turn it over to Hans.
But Mr. Mayor, I think you just have to say the numbers and then you made our presentation already, and I thank you for that. But but thank you. You you framed it just perfectly. And I I hope you indulge us if we repeat some of those statements in our prepared presentation. But what we, what you so astute characterized was that COVID-19, of course, has an impact, not just on the TOT, but also on the revenues that pay for the Conference Center Facility District. And our Finance Director and our team, we started reaching out to to the bankers as early as at the end of March of 2020, when when we saw the devastation that that was coming through our hotel industry. And we have been in constant contact off and on with the help of of Lauren, as well as Oric, James, Jim Fabian, as this is a trusted friend and consultant of the city and financial advisor. And we have been in contact with the bank since then. And so tonight it culminates. I told you, we 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 were, we are still communicating with the bankers to the last minute and red line versions are flying back and forth and new signature sheets have to be prepared. So it's 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 still all hands on deck approach. But what we are presenting to you tonight is, I think, a good solution for the for the next six, six months or so. And with that, I'll hand it over to to Finance Director Lauren Lee.
Hi, Council. Hi. Hi, Council. Hi, public. So I think for the purpose of the public, I'll go through some slides and then we can talk a bit about what's in the proposed solution and how many years it may carry us through this pandemic. So let me go through the slides real quick. Share the screen. So we have about six slides. This pertains. This pertains to the debt for the Conference Center. And what we're talking about is how do we solve the shortfall pertaining to the debt related to the Conference Center? So in March, we approached the council about the financial devastation to the general fund and certainly relative to the Conference Center itself. The Conference Center has debt that was raised to do the renovation. And also during that period, we estimate that there will be shortfalls in our revenues for this upcoming payment in December. We estimate the shortfall to be about half a million dollars. Furthermore, we also estimate the shortfalls will continue through 2023 because of the economic recovery due to COVID. We want to thank the bank for the efforts we've made so far. As council knows, we tried to negotiate a multi-year amendment. We did learn that there are regulatory issues to providing a long-term, multi-year amendment. So while this is a short-term solution, we feel that the financial estimates we have and also the clarifications in the amendment will enable us to get through 2023 because we have $3 million of reserve. By way of background, let's explain to the public the Conference Center debt. The Conference Center was renovated in 2014 and 15. It took $50 million of special tax revenue. The project in total was about 62 million, which means that there's about $12 million of other funding. In order to pay for the bond, there were special tax levies that continue throughout the debt and those debts are paid for by the hotel guests. The debt special tax is called a CCFD. The rate is between 4.15%, 1.6% and 0.8%. Again, this is paid by the hotel guests. There are two lenders or banks that are involved in this bond, TPB Investments and BBVA Mortgage. It's a 20-year debt, which matures in 2034. The average interest rate is 3.95%. Important in this discussion we had was, you know, when can we refinance this debt without penalty? So based on the current terms, we could refinance any date after December 2025 without penalty. So prior to that, we would have some make-whole provisions, which would be very costly for the city. Current balance on hand for this outstanding debt is $42 million. Also importantly is that during the year of 2017, 18 and 19, the special tax that we raised was actually higher than the debt due. So we were able to pay down some of the principles in those years in the amount of $3.6 million. However, the financial devastation due to COVID, we estimate that the debt would not be, we would not have enough revenues to pay for debt service in 2020, 2021, 2022 and 2023. There are two payments each year. In June, we have an interest payment and in December, we have interest and principal. It is the December payment that we are most concerned about. So let us walk through the proposed solution that you have before you. What the banks have proposed, which we think will be feasible and help us carry us through this period, is a 50% reduction in principal for December 1, 2020. It would reduce the payment of $1.8 million due in December to 8 to 900,000. In doing so, we estimate that we would have about $400,000 available in the upcoming payments and we would keep that in the reserve. We also estimate that we would use the reserve of $3 million plus this 400,000 to carry us through December 2023. Importantly in this amended document is that it clarifies that any use of the reserve, of the $3 million reserve, would not be a a condition of default. And I think that's very, very relevant during this time, especially given that we have $42 million outstanding. So again, we feel that this is a feasible solution. The reserve and the amount we have on hand, our estimates of the COVID impact would seem that we could make our payments through December 2023, in which case by that point, we should have sufficient revenues to pay our debt going forward. Also, we're hoping that by 2025, we would be able to refinance better terms. With that, we ask that you authorize the city manager to execute the amended documents and of the restated indenture, also to appropriate the funds for professional services. Want to thank the city team, especially Christie Dobby and also the city manager, the bond council, the fiscal advisor and the banks. And also thank the hotels. As an important part, tangent, but related to this, is that council amended our TOT remittance period from 60 days to monthly. In doing so, we also have remittances of CCFD monthly as well. So in doing everything on a shorter timeframe, which was hard for the hotels, we've been able to collect this revenue and also estimate these revenues a lot more timely, which enables us to respond to COVID a lot more swiftly. So I want to thank the hotels for being a partner in this solution. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, outstanding as usual. Questions before we go to the public? Councilmember Tyler, please.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and and the background. It was really helpful. I do have two questions and I'll, again, I'll throw these out together and if you could respond at the same time. So the first is, so the amount being deferred, which I'm not sure if deferred is actually the right word there, but the amount being deferred is half the total amount due. Though the staff report indicates a shortfall of 500K. So I, what I'm gathering and what I see from that last slide is that some of that's going to be that additional is going to be used to help with the out years. And so I'm just hoping that you can can clarify that. And then the second question is, can the city pay the deferred amount sooner? So we are deferring it to a later date. Is there a way that we can try to catch that back up as opposed to pushing out the the payments and incurring more costs from the interest?
Yes, great questions. So the first one is that we are doing a 50% reduction for December 1, 2020 only, which is the $900,000 reduction. Then 900,000 would be tacked into the final year, which is 2034. With that, we estimate that we'll have about probably 390 or closer to $400,000 available because of that modification. We're going to take that available fund and apply it towards the shortfall we estimate in December 2021. Right? Because COVID will have a long-term impact, we estimate, on this particular revenue source. So we are going to take that money and apply it to December 2021 and then use reserves for the future years that we estimate shortfalls. So that's your first question. Your second question is, should we have additional special taxes in excess of the debt due? Can we pay principal so we don't have to just milk this out into 2034? The indenture actually requires that. So similarly to what I put on the slide, in 2017, 18 and 19, when the city collects special tax in excess of the debt due, the indenture requires that that excess amount be remitted in each December. So we don't actually get to retain that money. It goes towards paying towards the principal. So our hope is that we won't have this debt way until 2034.
Okay, so one additional follow-up. If we see that the the economy doesn't recover as we might anticipate, does there seem to be willingness from the bank to allow us additional leverage in in out years if if we're still struggling a little bit?
The banks have been great partners in this. I think what we're doing is, this is a short-term plan and we'll continue to assess and stay in dialogue with them. As we mentioned, we did seek a multi-year solution, but we learned that in offering those, there are regular issues and challenges. So I think we will continue to monitor this. One of the conditions in the amendment is that we will increase reporting to the banks from semi-annual to quarterly and continue to be transparent with them on how the revenue is going. So they are, they have been great partners and we continue to work closely with them.
Thank you.
Good. Any more council questions before we go out? All right, public comments, please. Now, do we have any public comments?
We do not have public comment.
All right. So unless there's any further discussion, I'm going to make a motion to approve the stack recommendation with great appreciation.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Ed, did you want to add something?
Yes, I was trying to, trying to click there. It worked. I just wanted to address. Tyler, your your thinking is exactly right in terms of asking the questions in terms of these long-term deals, so it's going to 2034. I appreciate Lauren, you saying it's a short-term strategy and it sounds very sound and respectful. But for me, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking anxiously to 2025, when maybe we have a favorable interest rate drop at that period and we can refinance and it is less than 3.95. And then we we do with the strategy participate in a fast-track payoff, which we all try and do with our home mortgages and pay the principal faster and get it to less than 2034 and actually take a 20-year project and and make it more like 14 years or, you know, 13 years, whatever the number is. So, yeah, I'm on board with that and look forward to the recovery. So it's been tough and for those hotel partners that are watching and listening, we feel your pain. We understand exactly what you're going through. And you have the pressure, the CCFD payment, because your hotel properties have lean on it, I guess is the right term. But also we look forward to getting to the point where the hotels can actually have customers and participate in getting their employees back. So it's going to be a long, a long recovery. And I think you're exactly right, Lauren, in the 2023 time period. And we're hopeful it's faster than that because Monterey is a fantastic place to recover and do magic. And uh, we're we're hopeful it's faster than that because Monterey is a fantastic place to recover and do magical things. So let's hope the recovery is sooner. But that's all I want to say, but thank you very much for the hard work.
Thanks, Ed. Row call, please.
Council member Albert?
Yes.
Council member Williamson?
Yes.
Council member Hoffa?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Our our next item is again, more infrastructure, public works. And that is to grant an exclusive franchise to Monterey City Disposal Services. With the city of Monterey has a long relationship with Monterey Disposal, who've provided really excellent service to residents of Monterey at very reasonable costs. We uh, are costs are very competitive and below many of the municipalities around us. And over the years that I've had an opportunity to interact with Monterey City Disposal, they've been very flexible in that we we've seen things change. A a brief example. As you all know, I'm very excited about getting the compactor quote unquote off the wharf. Back in the day, the idea was you took all of your your garbage, your trash, and you put it all in a gigantic compactor and you reduced it to as small as amount that you could, then you haul it all to the dump. Well, those days are long gone. So as we get that compactor removed from the wharf and put into a new facility, it's going to take care of recyclables, uh, wet waste, food compost, along with what trash there might be, which would probably be very minimal. And all along, the Monterey disposal has been an excellent partner. And we can all remember when we we first got our, our first recycling bins. Remember those? They were three of them that stacked one on top of another. They were little bins. Then the truck, so we would separate them into, I forget, was it paper, cans, plastic? And I, what was the other one? Bottles. And then the truck would come along and they'd put them all back together in one truck and fix them all up again. Okay, but and now we have, of course, the bins on the street. So throughout all that, Monterey disposal has been really a good partner and has been flexible and also has on our city owned Ryan Ranch, a recycling center. And so it's that time that we again need to take a look at uh, our our franchise with them. So Hans will turn it over to you and I think it's going to uh, be going to our sustainability person and staff member Ted Terrasus pretty soon, who's always very calm. So Hans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in June uh, of twenty twenty, we we already presented to you uh, the Monterey City Disposal and the franchise agreement. At that time, we asked you for direction and you uh, gave us direction to uh, explore a sole source contract, uh, renewal of the franchise agreement with Monterey City Disposal for many of the reasons that you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I handed over to our sustainability coordinator Ted Terrasus.
Excellent. Thank you, Hans, and uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'll just pull up my presentation really quickly and uh, start going through some points. So um, so ultimately, as we just mentioned, we're focusing today on the exclusive waste hauling and recycling franchise agreement and uh, the extension through twenty thirty, or actually a new franchise agreement through twenty thirty. Uh, and just to set the stage very quickly, uh, the mayor made some great points already about some Monterey disposal service. Uh, but just to highlight some key uh, items, they've been our franchise hauler for a little over the past forty years. They, in addition to uh, hauling in the city, they also provide uh, services for the Naval Postgraduate School and the Presidio. Uh, they do rent and operate our city owned recycling facility at Ryan Ranch, as the mayor mentioned. And they actually did pay for the bond uh, to get that facility built that began back in the nineties and just finished up a couple of years ago. Uh, in addition to that, they pay the city us uh, roughly six hundred thousand dollars per year uh, in rent. And on top of both of those uh, issues regarding the recycling um, facility, they also uh, take the recyclables back to that recycling facility at Ryan Ranch, uh, bail the materials and sell them in markets mostly overseas, unfortunately, but sell the recyclables where they can. And those revenues are are used to stabilize the overall uh, waste hauling rates uh, from Monterey disposal and the rates we pay here in Monterey. Uh, and also the the final point, as was, we also did mention today, was that they do provide waste collection and recycling services at very competitive rates as we outlined a bit in the agenda report. So looking at what the the franchise agreement we're proposing right now, uh, to look at some key terms, we're focusing on um, one of the the main ones uh, right off the bat is uh, adjusting the franchise fee from ten percent, a ten percent franchise fee to fifteen percent franchise fee. And this is consistent with regional cities, the averages, uh, the average of the other uh, seven regional cities is about fourteen one per point one percent. Some are a little lower, some are a little above uh, fifteen percent. And this fee is ultimately necessary to recover compliant co- compliance costs that are going to be related to an unfunded state mandates, uh, specifically SB thirteen eighty three that was just finally officially passed last week. Uh, so that's one of the key reasons to sort of uncomplicate how we meet those demands and how we use the funds that we are getting from our waste hauler. And the last point there is that it is effectively just a three point two percent increase that our franchisee will see. Because right now, uh, with the ten percent fee, that franchise fee that we have with our hauler right now, in addition to that, they are also paying several costs to the city, including uh, one of the major one is staff, city staffing costs. So some positions here at the city, including mine, uh, that they're paying covering separately as part of that agreement. In the new agreement, uh, where we're proposing a fifteen percent fee, they will no longer be paying for staff costs separately. So we're trying to basically bundle all the costs together and make it easier and clearer for the funds we're going to need to spend for state mandates. And that is going to include uh, more city staffing and and some work that's going to have to be done in that right as well. So it's effectively uh, in terms of the increased Monterey City disposal is seeing is really only a three point two percent uh, increase as opposed to five percent when you look at the change from ten to fifteen percent. Some of the new services that will be included in the new franchise agreement, uh, and I highlighted some unique extra services, uh, such as cleaning and servicing the city waste cans. An alvarado and lighthouse, that's not a normal um, service that waste haulers provide. Use their heavy equipment operators. They don't always do custodial service. But they will be providing that service. Also, they'll be uh, collecting illegally dumped bulky bulky items. So they already collect bulky items from some of our residential customers or for a fee from our apartment complexes. But they're in a good position to assist with bulky items that are illegally dumped as well. Having some flatbed trucks and already coming out for bulky items. So that that was included in this franchise agreement. But again, not something that's common uh, with franchise agreements with solid waste haulers. Uh, we will also be adding curbside residential battery collection, uh, which will be great. We can put batteries right uh, curbside, uh, maybe in a bag on top of our recyclables and have those recycled curbsides. So people can do that easily from home. And also SB thirteen eighty three compliance, uh, the hauler will have to do some things specifically too, in terms of providing a certain amount of carts, even specific colors of carts, have them labeled specifically and even have some specific outreach and education that's going to be sent out. So everybody's going to have their key uh, requirements that we're going to have to meet with this thirteen eighty three and the hauler uh, will be doing that as well. Uh, just some final terms here that the franchisee is actually going to continue to provide. Uh, street sweeping is a very big one, uh, that we've actually um, looked at other vendors locally and found out that in order for them or to get a quote on what it would take for them to sweep, uh, the city of Monterey would take roughly five hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's something that's included in our franchise agreement and actually is actually implemented and the work's actually done uh, by Monterey City Disposal staff. It's not um, contracted out to a vendor. Uh, also there, they pay for uh, litter removal on highway one off ramps within city limits. So to keep our off ramps clean, that's something they've been doing for a while and something, again, that's not very common. Uh, and they will also continue to provide collection at all silly city facilities for recycling and solid waste. Uh, they do residential bulky item collection, as I mentioned, four times a year for residents. And they also will continue to assist with regulatory compliance programs for our other uh, assembly bills that we've had been dealing with for years, including AB three forty one and eighteen twenty six for mandatory recycling and organics diversion. So uh, quite a bit of help and um, uh, equipment and services and education they're providing to help us out. So uh, having said all that, uh, that's why it is a staff recommendation to um, execute this uh, franchise agreement and uh, continue on with Monterey City Disposal through the year twenty thirty. And with that, I'll I'll leave it open to questions.
Oh, just very fine report. Council member Dan, a question, please.
Thank you very much, Ted. Thank you uh, for the report and also thank you for coming out to the Monterey Peninsula Waste Management District's meetings. Um, it's nice to see a a familiar face out in those meetings. I appreciate you coming every time. So I do have, I do have a question about the franchise fees um, increasing from ten to fifteen percent. Uh, do you think that they'll pass that on to the rate um, the rate pairs or uh, will they absorb that? Have you talked to them about how they're going to to make that up?
Right. Well, the key issue right now is that because of thirteen eighty three, there will ultimately need to be a a subsequent rate increase. Uh, and really that's, that's where it's going to come from. It won't come from the increase of our franchise fee. For example, we could leave it at ten percent and have Monterey City Disposal pay uh, more fees or we could increase it to fifty percent. They pay less and the city pays more. But at the end of the day, we're going to need more rates to pay for the compliance issues that we're going to have to deal with. So it's really not so much a fa- it really what the increase to ten to fifteen percent is sort of to simplify and let this give the city more flexibility to do what we have to do to comply with state law without writing every single bit of all of the law out in the franchise agreement and saying Monterey City Disposal, you are required to pay for or meet every single one of the law requirements. So really, it's going to be a response to meeting this unfunded mandate rather than any change in the franchise fee. The franchise fee is basically just to assist us to make the compliance simpler.
Okay, thank you.
Ted, why don't you give an example, if you would, about these unfunded unfunded unfundated? I like that new word.
Unfunded mandates.
Unfunded mandate.
Sure.
That the the state is requiring, for example, uh, the organics.
Sure, uh, and I can show something really quick. Let me make sure I'm sharing my screen really quick. When we get back to this. So um, really quickly, um, the so the required task for thirteen eighty three, uh, like I said, collection and processing is going to be a little bit different. We're going to have to have uh, they have, you know, whether you have a two or three cart system or even a one cart system, they have very specific requirements we'll have to meet. Uh, we're going to go with three cart system. Uh, but you have to have specific colors, specific markings and that sort of thing. And with monitoring enforcement, you there, we actually are going to need staff or people to go out and actually do bin flipping, literally look in bins for contamination, sign people, follow up with enforcement. And this, the the law is going to require that we, I believe that we audit um, every route in the city at least once a year and we're going to have to convey all that information to the state uh, via CalRecycle. In addition, product procurement. So in addition to diverting all this organic material, we're actually going to have to buy it back or use compost or compressed natural gas or something like that as a city. So if we give all this material to Marina to process, the city's actually going to have to take some back um, and and use it. So it's basically the state's way of kind of closing the loop on that material. We'll have to adopt or this time we'll be required to adopt ordinances. It won't be an option. With the edible food recovery, we'll have to um, think of, right now, we're looking at potentially working with food banks and people that are already doing this work because they have refrigerated trucks, they're trained in food safety, they're working with a lot of these folks, but we're going to have to build out these programs so that restaurants or hotels or folks that are generating food waste, grocery stores in the city all have access to someone that can come and recover their edible food and take it to a facility. And that's not something we're working on right now. Um, and the last piece is education is and outreach is going to have to be uh, very extensive, very specific and uh, basically a lot of requirements. Some of the things we're doing now are ratcheted up a lot more. Uh, there's more little requirements here and there that we have to tick off. We have to keep all the data together and then report it to the state annually. So it it's getting uh, a lot more like, if you're familiar with stormwater or those kinds of requirements, it's starting to get a lot more along those lines in terms of the specificity and solid waste handling.
Okay, thanks. I I think it's really good for the public to understand how complicated it is getting out there. Sure, council uh, member Alan, please.
Yeah, Ted, um, so in the Hoffa home, my wife is very smart, very good. We compost pretty much everything. But I'm wondering, given what you're saying, especially for our restaurants and um, you know, businesses that produce a lot of that kind of um, waste, should we be, should we be planning for a city? Kind of a city location where we could do composting on a massive scale? Is that something that we should be planning for?
Well, really, the the best thing we've done is um, come together as the J P A and form the the Marina landfill. So what we've done there is really given us the flexibility to do and landfill these days is really a misnomer. It really is a material, a diversion facility. Uh, so a lot of great work. I mean, the digester that was out there for food waste was fantastic. We're moving on to the next things. And really, uh, the most cost effective, efficient way for us to get this work done is to kind of, we've got the space out there, we've got the permitting done out there. Everything's already been vetted and good to go. We just need to figure out the best way to process it. So really, the best thing I think we can do right now is, you know, make use of that J P A we kind of so wisely put together in the past and um, figure out how we're going to come together and get this or organics diversion done. Uh, and then again, you know, how we get that material procured. So we're using it on the backend as well. But I think the real key through all this is taking advantage of that J P A. And we're even meeting tomorrow about all the cities together and our technical advisory committee through the landfill to discuss how we're going to meet these thirteen eighty three requirements. And and that's a big one is getting this material out there and taking advantage of the work they're doing there. Because it's a big commercial scale, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I can jump, yeah, if I can jump in there, uh, Councilman Hoffa, it might be uh, it might be good if we had Tim Flanagan, the uh, general manager at the regional waste Monterey Peninsula Regional Waste Management District. Maybe he come out and and give us uh, just a very quick overview of what they're, what they're planning on doing for thirteen eighty three. That'll probably about, maybe in the future. Just a suggestion.
That's a great idea because Tim really knows his stuff. Uh, let's see if the, a question, council member Tyler?
Yeah, so uh, my question is, uh, do we feel confident in being able to meet the, meet that, I think it was four hundred and sixty six thousand needed for compliance and improvement with the, with only a three point two percent um, increase in the franchise fee? Because when I was looking at it before um, the figure that we were going to include back, it seemed like it was going to be enough. And and additionally, in my thought is, what if there's additional state compliance over the next ten years that comes out that requires us to go even a little bit further? Do we feel confident in being able to generate enough revenue in order to support that?
Right, yeah, I think that's a good question. And thank you. That's, that's a critical thing right now too, where we're trying to get a good estimation, not get too far ahead of ourselves. But one thing uh, we want to include, I believe, in the franchise agreement, the last one we had talked about it was uh, making the best estimates we can, but also potentially leaving a clause open uh, that says should this uh, amount uh, fail to meet the the mandated state requirements, that the 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 hauler would basically pick up the difference and we would, they would come to the city under the normal rate increase procedure. And we could discuss all this and say, look, uh, when we first did this, we were estimating X, Y and Z. It's coming out A, B and C. We're going to need more revenues and we may need uh, an X amount more rate increase to cover the difference. But I do think that it'd be wise for that exact reason, because a lot of these things we've never done before. Uh, the bin flipping, some of the monitoring, the food recovery, we're going to, we're planning on working together as a region to tackle this. But and make it most of the cost effective, but that, but the exact amount could fluctuate. And as you mentioned, there could be more mandates coming, franchise fees uh, fluctuate from year to year. So I think we are going to need that flexibility to say uh, if we do need backup, uh, that that the hauler would be able to step in and we could reevaluate where the rates are to, to make up the difference.
Okay, so we feel confident with this five percent increase moving forward?
For now, yes. For this year, right now, I think where we're at and makes a lot of sense and gives us we, to get these programs off the ground and running, and it'll give us a better idea of how good of an estimation we've made, if it's been off, or maybe we've overestimated some of the costs a little. But well, this first year will give us a lot of information to be more accurate about exactly sort of where we're going to need to be to comply.
Okay, thanks Ted. Appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Councilmember Ed, did you?
Yeah, a question for Ted. So looking at this proposal of a nine-year term extension, how do we build in the, the rate? And remind me, our process, was it an annual review of the monthly rate that the consumer paid? And we looked at this annually?
Well, we, in terms, what we compared to other cities or what, when we go for rate increase?
Yeah, when we went for a rating, that was how often?
Well, it, it depends. Really, it's kind of up to the hauler basically to present information to us to basically demonstrate that they need a rate adjustment. So they have the flexibility to make a seven percent profit over their revenues after they pay us the franchise fee. But if they're having issues where their revenues are not covering costs, or they're starting to get into a situation where they see that coming, or they know there's going to be changes in the recycling markets, basically they're required to come forward and present to the city their financial information, their audit information, and present that data so that we bring that to you, the council, and say, here's the information they've presented. City staff agrees that such an adjustment would be necessary, and then that would be what we recommend. But there's not necessarily a specific timeline to do it. What we are potentially looking at this time is potentially the concept of like a CPI increase or if there's landfill tipping fee increases, that we would automatically have an increase that would, you know, be a few percent a year or something like that to make sure that the rates don't get too far out of line. And then we wait five years to make a big, you know, rate increase or something like that. But we're working on some flexibility there to make sure that we don't wait too long between rate increases, but there's not a set timeline.
Yeah, good. And I appreciate you pointing that out because I know in the past, we've had some periods where it, it is a larger rate increase because it had been many years for the rate hauler. And then there was an adjustment. And I think in all fairness, it's hard to predict a nine-year period of time without getting caught up in, you know, a firm increase based on CPI and all that. But I, I want to make sure that we have a healthy relationship with this contract that continues to provide quality service to our community and keeps the rates in check to fairness. I'm looking at some of the other comparisons of some of the other cities. And I'm sure different companies, but also different services or frequency and number of days. So Carmel is quite a bit higher. They're at forty six dollars and we're at twenty one dollars. Just a snapshot. Why so much higher in Carmel?
Well, what happened, and Green Waste Recovery, so that's another franchise hauler on the peninsula that really basically has all the other cities except for us. And recently, they did a study to estimate where the rates are with all the cities. And they determined whether, you know, the rates were accurate or inaccurate or based on the services they had requested, if those rates were on target. And it turns out for Pacifico and for Carmel, they were pretty significantly off target. So that we saw that back in June, that we saw those thirty, forty percent rate increases because in practice they were demonstrably seeing a big difference between the rates, the services they were receiving versus the rates they were paying. So it was an equitable adjustment evaluation they did to determine that they were way off. There were some other cities that were just about on target. In one city, I think Marina may have actually, their rates might have gone down a little. But PG and Carmel were at the other end of the scale in terms of the services they're asking for and, you know, the rates they were paying specifically. So that was kind of a, a one-off correction that their hauler did to determine that they were not accurately reflecting the services they were receiving.
Ted, as I recall, as I recall in Carmel, they actually don't have bins on the street. The haulers get out of their truck, they walk to the house, they go into the back of the house, the side of the house, they find the resident's trash, they bring it out and they dump it into the truck.
Right. Yeah, it's, so those
Labor intensive.
Yeah, very much.
They've asked for very specific services that are expensive. And that made it a little more harder to, to estimate for them because that's not something that happens in every city. So they were finding, whoa, this is taking way longer, way more staff time to do than we thought. And then you end up with that adjustment that's, you know, much bigger than you would normally see.
Yeah. Well, I want to just go back to the rate increase piece. And as you craft and, and this, this new contract will come back to us, we'll certainly get more details. You know, the five of us are the last, the last point of where we make the decision and, and the residence and the commercial hauling rate. It's up to us to, to find the right prices and to make sure that we don't let it get out of hand. So I think the language in the, in the contract is so very important that it is making sure that the relationship is right, the price is right, it's valuable, it's value driven. And we, we don't get out of whack and we make sure that we don't have, you know, twenty five percent increases every other year. So I think we, we are at the right price now. I like to look at this. There's work to see. I'm looking forward to seeing the, the final contract language. But at twenty one eighty five for residential service a month, that's a good starting point. And certainly would like to make sure we, we keep a quality hauler and they're not, they're not losing money and they're, they're wanting to bolt in the middle of a contract. But nine years is a long time. So there's got to be some reopeners in there too.
There are, there are. The contractor can come back. And as Ted indicated, we, we want to make sure that the contractor comes at reasonable intervals and not every three, four years.
Yeah, yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, good. And do we have any public comment?
We do. And we'll ask the first caller is, last three digits is two zero four. If you would please unmute yourself by dialing star six. Let's see. There we go.
Yeah. Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor and Hans. I just, Tom Raleigh calling from Fisherman's Flats and speaking here. I wanted to, I missed the June meeting unfortunately with the comments on the residential services. And I'm speaking both as a president of Fisherman's Flats neighborhood and also as a Realtor who's managed properties in Seaside, Marina, Delray Oaks, and the city of Monterey. And I've observed the residential services. And I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, the city of Monterey, not only were it was the first with curbside recycling, and the mayor mentioned about the little trays, colored trays we had, which were eventually replaced by containers on rollers. And also, in that regard, I believe we were the first to have yard waste recycling. And I know in my house, we have two cans because we have a big yard. And one of the things is, city of Monterey has been the leader. And I think the fact that you had a good staff person, her name was Angela Giogrande. And I guess her married name is Angela Brantley. But anyway, she was outstanding. In those days, she was the head of the recycling for the city before Ted came along, and now it's called sustainability. But there are a couple of challenges coming up that I want to mention to you. One I'm aware of because of my representation on the Sanctuary Advisory Council. There is pollution of plastics in depth in Monterey Bay. And it's been discovered that it's at depth, not just floating like the great, great plastic patch that's out in the middle of the Pacific. This is going to be a challenging problem. We've lost the ability to dump recyclables in, in China the way we did in the past. And so there's going to need to be some kind of statewide solution, and I've raised this issue at the Sanctuary Advisory Council, for the state to get involved besides just passing bills like thirteen eighty three, passing the mandates on to the cities and counties, for some kind of statewide improvement in recycle, cycling plants or whatever. And it's almost bigger than just the Marina Waste Management. It needs, there's not really a comprehensive program statewide. Eventually, this will get down to us and there's going to have to be some kind of solution. The other thing is that we are a tree city, and I believe if my, my household is like everybody else's, we have a lot more yard waste clippings every day. So I think we want to continue to be a leader in the recycling, in sustainability. And Ted's doing the great job. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew that Monterey has always been the leader in the recycling on the Monterey Peninsula. And I don't see, based on my continued management of properties in other cities, the other cities, for instance, did not even have yard recycling until just recent years. Monterey has been the leader and ahead of the power curve on this whole sustainability and recycling. And I hope we continue this leadership. And the partner in all of this was Monterey City Disposal and Gary Perola, who's the former owner. So I think we have a lot to thank Monterey City Disposal Services. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We have no other public comment on this item tonight, Mayor Clyde. Nope, and you're muted. Mayor Roberson, we
I, I got it. Thank you. Okay. All right. I was blowing my nose, folks. I spared you. So bringing back to the council, are we ready for action?
I'm going to move approval of the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second. All right. Any more discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to city manager's update on COVID nineteen, something obviously that's on everybody's mind. And what is your city doing? And our city manager also is our emergency director, and he's been very much ahead of the curve and, and making sure that Monterey is following all the protocols and meeting all the needs and keeping it safe and healthy. Hans?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you saying I'm ahead of the curve. It takes a team. Our team is jointly ahead of the curve on many topics. So let me share my, my screen and the presentation. So my presentation tonight is really short and brief, Mr. Mayor, and, and, and just gets to a few items that I think are interesting. We, we continue to adapt our COVID nineteen response strategies as, as council is aware and the communities are where we, we immediately identified the need to help the businesses in March and then created a stimulus program here in the city. And what you did today also in, in, under the consent item agenda was to approve additional measures that help businesses, particularly the restaurant businesses with outdoor seating. We, we approved the, the outdoor seating that will use parklets until the end of October twenty twenty two in order to provide assurance for the investing restaurants that their investments can amortize over time. So I really encourage the restaurant owners and the restaurateurs to really look at in front of their businesses, see the opportunities to use parklets that the city of Monterey owns and operates be used as additional outdoor seating areas. And again, we wanted to give all of you a planning assurance. Those parklets can stay in place at least till October twenty twenty two. Also, we realize the, the drop in temperatures and you, you allow today also the use of space heaters on Wolf one and Wolf number two. The current regulations prohibited the use of space heaters there. But together with our fire department, we determined that space heaters are allowed if they are complying, in compliance with how to be used and how to set up. So we, we try to respond and recognize the business needs. We also try to have a balanced approach with respect to opening our parks, keeping the trails open. Our Parks and Recreation Director is working on preparing for playgrounds to be opened as early as December. And there's, there's always work to be done to, to open it responsibly. So we, we didn't want to, we just didn't want to just open playgrounds and not ensure that there are some standards abided implemented that, that helps for a safe use of those playgrounds. The mask enforcement, I think overall, I can state that a lot of more people understand now the value of masks. And while we in June, July were the first agency also that, that changed the mask enforcements in the county of Monterey to a more stricter standards. I think a lot more folks are understanding now the value of the CDC just updated their guidance. But what we also see is a little bit relaxation on the weekend and, and also in the evening a little bit. And so our patrols, our code compliance person will be out or is about, is out and about also on weekends, also in the evenings, patrolling certain areas. We, we get, we have received reports from residents that shared with us that they were concerned about the business A that allowed patrons inside after ten o'clock, or business B that violates this thing or the other thing. And so we are out there, we are enforcing. And just Friday, the thirteenth, we were out in the evening and issued two citations to two different businesses. What we also see in the county of Monterey, like you see across the nation, a spike in COVID nineteen infections. And there is definitely a fatigue out there. The, the, the residents, the businesses, the visitors. As a matter of fact, even our, we can look at ourselves and see we are fatigued of the situation that we have through COVID nineteen. And so the numbers are spiking and the, the county health officer cannot really point to any particular events. It's a more general increase in spikes as we learned today. So we, we started today a new outreach campaign. Thanksgiving is, is before us. And we all know that gatherings, family gatherings in particular, are a main source of infections. And so we started today a public outreach campaign that has the hashtag give thanks, not COVID. So I'll, I'll show you a few of those slides that, that we are going forward today. We, we designed our talented team, not me, our talented team around Lori Welga and Eric Palmer and our, our assistant city manager. They designed a lot of those postcards, mainly Lori and Welga. And we designed sixteen digital postcards that people can download. And we also create a little, a little competition, shall we say? If people hashtag the, the hashtag that I just mentioned, give thanks, not COVID, and tag us as City of Monterey, among those folks that are doing that on social media, we are giving three posters each day away from Monterey two fifty posters. Believe it or not, we still have a few Monterey two fifty posters left since a lot of the celebration took just place virtually. So we find that is a good added value to, to give away some posters. I think, I encourage you to, to, to check in with us. I, I think some of them are actually pretty, pretty good, pretty funny. And I hope that, that the public embraces that. And as a matter of fact, tonight already, the Weekly was posting that in there, in the weekly daily announcement that the Weekly now has. As always, I like to talk about one of the crown jewels of our programming here that we installed after COVID nineteen broke out, which is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We continue to do, I think, good work here in We continue to do, I think, good work here in, within our community. We have now assisted over 115 folks. Remember last week I sent you an update that had the number 105? So another 10 were brought online. About $234,000 is, has been allocated already. We have seven more applications right now in the pipeline allocating another $14,500. There is a little bit over $450,000 left. And we keep continuing to do outreach and push for, for people to recognize our program and just try it and see if they qualify and sign them up for that. As, as council proposed to us, I think, two meetings ago, we went into another public outreach campaign. We, we advertised in the Spanish-speaking newspaper El Sol. We also had a newspaper article launched in the Californian. We had another mentioning at the Monterey County Weekly. So, so we, we try really to, to promote this program up and down the county. And when I look at the individual stories for each one of those applications, I can tell you, I think that there's a lot of hardship out there and that program addresses that hardship just in, in the correct way. And again, my thanks goes out to all of those that have been working on that program that are not just our staff member, but also engaged community members who gave us great ideas, great suggestions that we could incorporate as well as the council to, to allow that program to go forward. And with that, I complete my COVID-19 presentation and ask if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Hans. Questions for our city manager? Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, not so much a question, it's really just some comments and some congratulations. I really am proud to be a member of this city council and a citizen in our city. I really think we are doing the best that we can. I think we're doing the right things. I want to give Hans and our staff a lot of credit. We're helping our small businesses. We're helping people stay in their homes. And ultimately, the things that we're doing, even though they're uncomfortable and difficult with mask enforcement, for example, that's going to be the pathway that gets our economy back on path sooner. So it's difficult, but I really believe we're doing the right thing. I heard on NPR today, an epidemiologist, an expert, talking about how cities, as soon as they impose mask enforcement ordinances, those communities saw significant improvements. I believe we've seen it here. Unfortunately, the rest of the county was a little bit slower to get on board. But you know, that mask enforcement is so important because it is proven to be the, a very effective way to slow the spread of the disease. And if we slow the spread of the disease, that makes it easier for us to open up business. So I just really encourage people, please, please, please observe that requirement. The other thing is, we're seeing throughout the country, family get-togethers and get-togethers, private get-togethers inside homes as the weather cools is becoming a leading vector and a leading cause of the spread. So when you're looking at your Thanksgiving, try to have it early in the day, have it outside. Don't have as huge of a get-together. Wear your mask, be safe, keep your distance. You want to be able to get together with your Uncle Ed, you know, your Uncle Dan, your grandfather Clyde, your crazy Uncle Alan, your happy Uncle Tyler next year, right? And so let's please all think about that as we plan our Thanksgivings. You know, that's all I really want to say is let's be careful, let's be thoughtful. We want all to be, be together next year. And we can do it. We're doing the right things. Thank you, Hans. Thank you, staff.
Yeah, that's great. Before we go into any more comments, Nat, any public comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll go to, let's go to council comments. And Dan, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. So this is related to COVID-19. Just an update on some of the things that are happening at Monterey, Salinas Transit and MST, one of my favorite boards, besides the waste management. I like that board too.
What about us?
Yeah, you're, you guys are okay. You're all right. But you know, speaking of COVID cases, since March, MST has only had seven cases of COVID. And when you think about all the contacts that our bus drivers make, it's amazing that there's only been seven. But, but because of those cases, MST formed a contact tracing unit which assess, assists the county health department in, in proactively tracing these potential cases. And the reason I bring that up is because our, our general manager, Carl Sadorak, he, he brought up that there's a, John Hopkins University offers a free four-hour course and cert, a cert, cert, certification course on teaching people or employees how to review people diagnosed with, with virus and, and identifying them and, and questioning them. And it's really helped at MST because we found out that of those cases, all those cases came from their homes and not from other employees. And because of that program, it really helped out a lot. So I can give the information. It's free. It's a free course of John Hopkins University. It's a four-hour certification and maybe our employees might be interested in it. So that's a, that's the one thing I wanted to bring up. And the second thing is, I think we do have a lot to be thankful for and I hope everybody cooks a good turkey, except of course Alan, but everybody else does. And, and that we, we enjoy our families, immediate families that are living with you. So congratulations on that and, and happy Thanksgiving. That was it.
Yeah. Thanks, Dan. I think you pointed out that the essential workers that we think about and, and the bus drivers certainly are essential workers who are basically exposing themselves to who knows what every time they drive a bus. So lots of gratitude to them. Yeah, okay, Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I just wanted to let folks know that, you know, I, I'm on the joint committee of the Gathering for Women and Community Human Services Group that is working on the Monterey Peninsula Homeless Shelter. And it's, we're a little bit behind schedule, partly because we've had some issues in the reconstruction of the facility having to do with the kitchen and it's just some of the things turned out to be problematic. But we're not going to be opening in November as we hoped. We're now anticipating that the opening will be in December. But we still are on pace to be open and, you know, to be opening that shelter for homeless women and homeless families before the end of the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyler?
Yeah, so on Monterey One Water, Mayor, you may recall this. You forwarded me a message from one of our constituents that was having issues making payment on a fixed income as a senior. And this is a problem that many folks are having now with paying their utilities along with other costs of living in the region. And so our staff at Monterey One Water has been looking into finding a solution to help folks that are in need of financial assistance in an emergency situation. So we're in the middle of developing that now. It went to our Plans and Projects Committee this past week and it's going to be going to the board meeting later this month. So I'm not sure how long that's going to take to stand up, but something's in the works. So I just kind of wanted to let folks know that some relief should be coming soon in, in that regards. But in the meantime, the county does have a program where they're offering assistance with the CARES Act funding for utilities, if you need assistance there. And then with that, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Okay, thanks for that. Uh, to Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, I hope you feel better, Tyler. So just a few comments. The beard is gone.
We noticed.
I'm not doing a COVID protest anymore. I, I'm tired of looking like Alan.
You look so much younger.
Yes, thank you. I had, I had two people.
That's a problem.
Yeah. Well, I had two people that called me Alan when I passed them by and I said, something's got to change here. Yeah, so the beard, beard's gone. Yeah, going to see the grandkids at Thanksgiving, so I don't want to scare them. I, I want to highlight a good work on our city manager and staff. That was a letter that was sent recently to Caltrans highlighting, and you all saw, I'm sure, the copy, highlighting the locations along the freeways, on ramps, off ramps, where we have trash in some encampments that are getting really out of control. So a letter was sent to Caltrans. So I look forward to maybe getting their attention and seeing what they might be able to partner with us and, and help. Because that, that's probably the number one thing that I hear from, from my network and folks that see so many of the, the trashy encampments that are bleeding onto the freeway, onto the on, off ramps and on ramps. So looking forward to hear from Caltrans. You know, just the thoughts, unrefined, looking at 2021, we're all anxious to find out what the solution's going to be for COVID. Alan, you gave a good summary. I won't repeat that again. But you're right, we all have to do our part and we hope that other, other cities will also ramp up and, and also do enforcement to make sure, and education, to make sure we get all the residents of Monterey County well and get this under control. But the vaccine is going to come out and it's going to take time and it's going to be a little slow. And we all watch the news and we're hearing possibly 20 million by the end of December. And we have 400, well, 350 million people in the United States. So with those numbers and the production, however it's going to work, it's not going to be instantaneous. So people need to be patient and vigilant and don't let up and look for those long-term solutions. But that long-term may be things like a year for the vaccine to, to get to everyone. I look forward to the ways that we might be able to participate as a city in, in actively setting up locations where we can gather and line people up and see how the medical folks in, in our community can help serve our community and get the vaccine delivered as fast as we can for our community. Just as I saw in the advertisement, the city's going to be participating and helping. The Thanksgiving meal is being shifted from the fairgrounds to the Dennis the Menace parking lot. And I'm sure that's going to be a massive line, very well organized. So I'm, I'm so glad that we're able to participate in, in that worthy cause. So just shifting gears a little bit, tomorrow night is Ambag. And we're going to recommend to the Ambag Board that we stand pat with all of the folks that are in the committees and the locations of service in the Ambag Board. As you know, it's Santa Cruz County, San Bernardino County and Monterey County representation, so a very large board. There's a subcommittee for the Sanctuary Advisory, Finance Subcommittee and the regular board. And we're recommending, recommending that we stay pat with the chair for one year. And because of the disruption with COVID, we felt like it was important just to keep everything intact for our subcommittees. And our chair will still be Steve McShane. And Kristen Peterson from Capitola is the number, number two. And then the third year, it would be my, my time to, to be there. And I'm also on the Finance Committee and we're in good shape with Ambag because the funding is passed through and minimal and there's not really projects. The other board is the Transportation Authority of Monterey County. And we received some excellent presentations at the Rail Subcommittee in terms of visioning and thinking about rail service to the peninsula from Santa Cruz and on into Salinas. I think that MST has probably had the same presentation and there'll be future presentations and we'll ask for them to come and present to our council as well. There is no firm plan for light rail coming into Monterey. This is long-term, looking at the conduit first from Santa Cruz to Salinas and somewhere on the peninsula, but there is nothing immediate. We're probably talking 15 years in the future. So these are long-range, large projects. And I was shocked to find out that a locomotive costs about $7 million.
Wow.
So we're talking about, as we have rail service, the Transportation Authority of Monterey County would likely be the agency that would collaborate to do that with Santa Cruz and potentially to San Luis Obispo. So there's a lot of those conversations that is the 10 to 15 to 20-year timeframe for rail service to the peninsula. So there'll be more on that to come. And Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Don't eat too much. And Alan, this could be your cheat day. You can eat meat. You can eat meat.
Vegan lasagna.
Okay, well, turkey for me and everything else, but happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Mr. Mayor, Ed prompted my memory about the Thanksgiving. So just wanted to, again, clarify, for folks who are in need, you can, you can sign up to have either to pick up a meal at Dennis the Menace the Park or have a meal delivered to, to you. You can go to the city's website at monterey.org to sign up. You need to really pre-register. That's how we're going to avoid hopefully the huge long line because there'll be a particular time on Wednesday for you to come and pick up your meal. And if you want to volunteer to help deliver meals or hand out meals, you can go to the monteraycoanis.org website and there's a volunteer sign up there. So we do need help and thank you, Ed, for reminding me of that.
Yeah, it'll be a good event, but definitely register because there's limited space to be able to get in line.
Good, that, that's interesting because I was thinking along the same lines when I saw Dennis Taylor's article, which was so well-written last Saturday, November 7th, when he talked about the Kiwanis Club and the Food Bank of Monterey County getting together. Because historically, I say you, talking to Alan in particular, as a Kiwanis member, have been having that, that, that really almost sacred get-together at, at Thanksgiving at the fairgrounds all these years. And obviously that isn't going to happen. So the president, I'm, I'm trying to kind of paraphrase what Dennis wrote. The President Anita Roth reached out to Melissa Kendrick with the Food Bank and said, what could we do? So Anita, being a very smart person, contacted Alan Hoffa. And then Alan, being really, really smart, he contacted the city manager. And the city manager, being really, really, really smart, got in touch with Shannon Leon, who was the city's interim recreation and community services manager. So at that point, they were able to put together this program. And so as Alan pointed out, go online, there's also a phone number that I'll read from the article 646-3866 for people who can't register online and you have to register, you'll be picking it up Wednesday. And also stepping up were the, let me catch, the First Capital Bank, which contributed $7,500. The Kiwanis contributed $5,000. And the Kiwanis, Alan, where in quotations, designated the worker bees. And so.
That's right.
That's right. And so I, I, I think it's great that you all brought that up. And it was just such a great article. I love the way Dennis wrapped it up and he said, the Grinch, the Grinch is not invited. So that was really a good article. Yeah, so thanks, thanks for stepping up all the teamwork, people caring for each other. That's, we care for the city and we care for each other. City manager reports? Comments, I'm sorry?
Yes. Did we get to Tyler? I'm sorry, did I miss Tyler? Okay, Tyler, it's okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Smith, we have a use.
I can repeat it all again for you if you want.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
No, can we mute? Can we mute him?
Councilmember-
Hey Tyler, you have his phone number.
All right, I I cannot make the joke now. It's too late for that. I just wanted to say we have a used train engine for you, Councilmember Smith. It's it's nicely packaged with a fence around it at Dennis the Menace. And it doesn't cost, it doesn't cost seven million dollars.
We want battery operated, so it's sustainable.
I wanted to thank everyone who voted for Measure Y. Today, the County Election Office provided the ninth update to the election. Measure Y is is trending is almost seventy two percent. But what I felt also also interesting today is voter participation in the county was at eighty point one seven percent. So record votes and just two numbers also that stick out. Around eleven thousand three hundred fifty people went to the polls in the county. And the other hundred fifty four thousand votes came by by mail. So with that, that that is pretty, pretty dramatic and interesting. Councilmember Albert, we also have John Hopkins trained contact tracers trained in the city and working in the city of Monterey. And that's all. I'm wishing you also a very happy Thanksgiving.
All right, well, then, stay safe and healthy, everyone. I appreciate you all. Well, our meeting is adjourned.